All right, it is seven o'clock. We'll call this meeting to order. Bailey, get a roll call, please.
Councilmember Backus.
Here.
Councilmember Bain.
Here.
Councilmember Husnick.
Here.
Councilmember Eichner.
Here.
Mayor Winnick.
Here. I ask everyone to rise for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to free, public, progressive conscience, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited, and just as a whole.
All right, I'll look for a motion for the approval of the agenda.
I'll make that motion. Oh, go ahead.
All right, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that brings us to open forum. Ron Schaefer.
Ron Schaefer, Forest Lake. This is more of an informative questionnaire. On the buses that go to the city from here to St. Paul in Minneapolis, I'd like to know the cost and whether they're making money, losing money. And I don't like the idea of people coming up here and get here and then how our help, I need to get back to the cities to go to work. They shouldn't have come up here if they couldn't afford to drive their cars back and forth. I did it for over 20 years. The second thing is a water runoff, stormwater runoff. I'd like to know what the money's used for, and I wonder if you couldn't publish it in the paper, say, "We wasted this much money on this and that." I don't want any more of that Stella's parking lot, $35,000? It was only $35,000, I was told. Well, $35,000 seems like a lot of money. Okay, the last thing is the metro mobility. I don't know much about it, but I'm thinking, do they serve refreshments on that ride? And if not, I could bring my own. I'm wondering if you couldn't tell me when they operate, and if they couldn't come out to my house when we got a little time, my wife and I would be willing to ride around. I don't know where they go or what they do, but if you want to come out and pick us up, I'm sure we can make some kind of arrangements for you. Please do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. I think metro mobility will come out to your house. I'll get the information for you, though.
Oh, really? Thank you. Dick Chita. Dick Chita, 21833 Healy. I spent a bit of time going over your agenda packet for the simple reason that the basic finances of the city are all disclosed and we'll get a final audit that will be more exact as to the current position. What we notice is that, of course, when the economy is good, we should be getting a good return on our investment. I think that maybe that is an item that should be looked at. You show all of the adjustments, and it doesn't appear as though we're getting a real bang for our buck. The other item is, or items, that we seem to prioritize our spending in such a way that it doesn't really benefit the majority of the community. I think that most people would be very, very upset if you shut off their water sewer, but they wouldn't get too excited if you didn't plow the parks or whatever. There's an issue of prioritizing your spending and how you address these other issues as time goes by. You have some freestanding enterprise funds, and they should truly be just exactly that. And in the past, there's been a lot of money that has been loaned from the sewer and water fund that hasn't been paid back. And so when you find that you're going to have a shortfall, or you have spendings for the future in those funds, you seem to always go to, let's raise the rate. And then, as I hear a number of times from people in the audience, that they're being charged fees for services and product that is not delivered. So I think that it might be a good exercise for the city council to sit down and analyze the entire picture and try to determine how you can service the greatest portion of your community with the needs that are necessary. And I know that myself, I'm building a new home, and I had to hook onto the sewer, and I have to put in a well. I'm only 500 feet away from the water system. It would just seem to me that building your revenue stream would be important, to run a line down, even though I know that my neighbors are not going to be happy. They don't want to hook up to city water because they already have a good well. I just didn't have a well, so I had to put a well in, and so not having the option, I went that route. But I think that there are places that you can increase your revenue stream. You can do maybe a more efficient job of servicing the greater portion of the community. I think that you've done a good job. The finances show that the funds have been adequately spent, and so I hope that you continue to do that. And with tonight, the financial consultant that you have will give that report. But I think that it's your obligation, too, to look deeply into the report. And I know that some of you have business backgrounds, and you do understand the finances, and I think you should be applying them when you make a decision. Thank you.
All right, that closes open forum for today. I'll look for an approval to the consent agenda, or changes to it.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we approve consent agenda items A through K and remove consent agenda item B.
Did you say B or D?
Yeah, so A and then C through K, removing B as in "boy."
I'll second the motion.
All right, motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, that takes us back to item 6B.
So, Mr. Mayor, 6B is the third quarter financial report, and I would just like to make a suggestion that in the future, that this not be a consent agenda item, and instead that staff work with our financial representatives to have a presentation and some council discussion. I think this is the one opportunity where all of the pieces come together. We spend a lot of time in a lot of the detail. However, I want us to make sure that in the future, we are looking at things like our taxpayers are looking at, our financials, which is a single-line item, and this is the one spot where it all comes together. And I think to have that discussion in the future and to have a presentation that summarizes, not at this detail, there's lots of pages here, but that summarizes and have a future council discussion, I think is important. So, no specific questions on this item, just a request for the future.
All right, sounds good. So, look for motion on item 6B?
I would make a motion, we approve 6B, the third quarter financial report.
I'll second that.
All right, motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Item 7A, CloudX Vape Tobacco License Revocation Hearing.
Mayor and council members, tonight before you is a memo exhibits and a possible resolution regarding the revocation of a tobacco license for CloudX vape located at 843 West Broadway Avenue in Forest Lake. This was tabled at last week's November 26 meeting, so the license holder could be represented by council. On November 1st, 2018, the Forest Lake Police Department conducted a tobacco compliance check at CloudX vape. During this compliance check, officers were assisted by a person under the age of 18 years old, and the minor stole the tobacco product containing nicotine by an employee of CloudX vape. This is the third tobacco license violation in 24 months, in addition to the November 19, 2017 violation and a December 19, 2017 violation. In addition, as noted in the memo, the Forest Lake Police Department has received a total of four complaints in the past year of CloudX vape selling nicotine products to minors, including two in the past week since the November 26 meeting. Pursuant to Forest Lake City Code, Chapter 118, subsection 12, a third license violation in 24 months shall result in a license revocation. The city council may choose to impose penalties and conditions different than those stated in the city code. And I believe they're here with council.
All right, come up, please.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council staff, my name is Patrick Dorn. I represent CloudX vape. I just want to start by saying thank you for accommodating my schedule. I know there was a vote last week, so I really do appreciate you allowing my client to come prepared with council. I certainly have to say that I regret coming before this council yet again. I understand, and maybe you all remember that I was here with CloudX vape last year. So, I do regret having to come again. I think the representatives for the business will provide what I would consider an explanation, not an excuse. I don't think anybody's going to be making any excuses, but I do think there is some sort of an explanation that I think council needs to hear in order to make an informed decision. It's my understanding that CloudX vape has had a failed sting here recently. It looked like, from my review of the agenda, that council either has had a recommendation, has already had a discussion, but is considering revoking the license. It's my hope that my words, and the words of the business representatives, that the council will change that opinion here after we discuss. I'm aware that Forest Lake City ordinance calls for that penalty. I'm absolutely aware of it. I've read the statute. It's pretty clear. However, I'm also aware that the penalty is considerably greater than that of the state statute. I understand legal background. Ms. Nason would tell you that the city can make stricter penalties. There's nothing unconstitutional about that. Certainly, the city's right. The reason that I mention that is just to put this into context. Min Stat 46112, a third offense within 24 months isn't a revocation, but a $250 fine and a suspension for seven days. Like I said before, the city's free to make additional recommendations for penalties, have their own city ordinances. And I also understand, and as I stated at the last city council meeting, it's important to protect the minors of the community. And I think every one of these business representatives understands that, acknowledges that, and it's absolutely worth mentioning again. I also know that I shouldn't assume, but I would think that the council has some idea that Mr. William Shasinski is indirectly involved with this business. He's the one that started it. This is kind of a satellite facility that was run by Ms. Hughes. Everybody heard from her last week, and she was also here at the last city council meeting. If this council elects to sanction CloudX vape in a manner other than complete revocation, Ms. Hughes and Mr. Shasinski will no longer be involved whatsoever. The business is going to take a completely different turn, and Ms. Courtney James and her father Dale are going to be taking over the business if the council decides to forego revocation. I think this is evidenced, and Ms. Fensel can confirm that, Ms. James has applied for a 2019 tobacco license in order to get the ball moving before the deadline comes. So, I just wanted to make the council aware, Ms. Hughes will no longer be involved, Mr. Shasinski will no longer be involved. He has two businesses, in addition to the one that was in the Forest Lake that he kind of helped out with, one in Waconia and one in Minnetonka, both which have never had tobacco issues. So, obviously, something's amiss here, and I think the effort to make considerable changes within the business hierarchy makes sense. As Ms. James will tell you, that her and her father are very much committed to being completely hands-on with this business. She'll tell you that from her mouth, and she'll do her best to assure this council that there are going to be no more tobacco violation issues. Now, you also hear from two employees, one, you could call him the offending employee and the manager of the business. You'll hear, again, an explanation. I don't think it's going to be an excuse, but it's going to be an explanation. And I think, based on that explanation, I think the council can go outside of its purview of the necessary penalties here. Lastly, before I turn it over to those employees, I want to point out the fact that CloudX vape has passed stings before. They don't fail every single one. They're not just letting everybody in, selling tobacco to every single person that they see, regardless of whether or not they're a minor. They have passed checks. And so I think that can, at least, I hope that it allows the council to understand, and I believe personally that this was an isolated event. With that being said, I invite any questions for myself right now. Otherwise, I'll turn it over to the business representatives.
Any questions for the council? Go ahead.
Hey, council, my name is Cole and I am the manager of CloudX vapes. Recently, we had a client, or a appliance fail, and she has been a regular customer. We have ID'd her five different times, swiped her ID. It has passed. The birth date stated 19, and the time that she doesn't come in, we failed. So, we built the relationship with her, and we did not ID. I get that we're supposed to ID every time we come in, but even if we would have ID'd, would she have passed or failed? So, then we've never ID'd her, and we failed.
I've got one question. You know, I've known a lot of places, alcohol, tobacco.
Mm-hmm.
They just check everybody. I thought that pretty much is a mandatory policy.
Yes, it is.
So, why wasn't she ID'd at the time she was in?
Because we already thought that, well, if she would have been in there the day before, as she was, we ID'd her the day before as that, too. And it stated 19. And then when she showed the picture.
Visually, you didn't use a machine?
No, yeah, we used the machine, the card reader. It said 19. Her age was 19.
Okay.
And then she came in the next day. Ryan was working with me the day before. We knew who she was. We didn't ID her, and then she happened to be a sting.
And she was under 18?
Yeah, that's what her ID stated.
So, you're saying, basically, you're saying the police used a fake ID?
No. She was using a fake ID. And then she used a regular, and then we never ID'd her, and she would have never had an ID.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Hi, council. I'm Ryan Copy, and I'm the one that did this act, and I would like to apologize to the city of Forest Lake and to you guys as council members. And I would just like to give my explanation for why it happened. My manager, Cole, which just talked, has stated that he ID'd her five different times, and I've been working for the past five months. And I've been there for those identifications. I've seen it happen. And I would also like to say that this isn't an excuse. It is just an explanation on why I did not ID her, because she's like a regular customer. Like, if you were in a bar, and I'm not, I'm just using this as a metaphor, if you were in a bar, and then a regular customer had been coming in for basically every day, like she had been for 15 mils that she said she was losing, then you'd stop IDing them because it's a regular customer. That's all I wanted to say, and I'm very sorry that this happened.
Thank you. Any questions for either of the speakers?
Hi, I'm Courtney. I was not involved with the business at any time over the last year. I understand there have been issues, and that the lack of hands-on leadership may be a factor. As a result of the latest incident, the business decided it needed to go a different direction and to get the issue under control. I am willing to step in and take full control of the business in an effort to avoid these issues in the future. To evidence the fact, I have already taken necessary steps to apply in for a tobacco license under my name for 2019. I am willing, or I am hoping that the council allows the business to have a fresh start for the new leadership for 2019.
Thank you.
I'm Diane Hughes. As you know, I've seen you before.
Hold on one minute.
Can I have a question for you?
Sure, Courtney.
What if any relationship do you have to the owner?
He's my boyfriend.
Okay, so you're not a total stranger to the business?
No.
Thank you.
Hi, I've known Courtney for a while, and she's a very mature young lady. She wants to take, I've been talking often on the past year with what has happened, and the business seemed to be going the right direction, and she's gotten a little bit more involved in it and seemed to take an interest in it. And I really, truly think that she would be hands-on where, to be honest with you, I've tried to be as much hands-on as I could, and apparently I failed. So, I think with the new leadership, it's going to be stronger. The business has been doing wonderfully well. And I will say that everybody that works there does know how serious the offenses are, and we have tried, truly tried to do everything we could not to have this incident happen again. And again, I personally want to say I'm sorry it happened, but it did through false ID, and all I can say is I'm sorry it happened. But we did try our hardest. And I do believe that with the new leadership, with Courtney being there, I truly believe that it's going to be run more hands-on. Thank you very much for your time.
I do have a couple of follow-up things to mention, and I think Ryan would tell you this. He was suspended for two weeks without pay. Mr. Shasinski did take that step, and Mr., excuse me, Cole was able to keep him from the business for two weeks. So, you know, for someone 16 years old who's trying to make a living, two weeks without pay is a big deal. And so, they did punish Ryan appropriately, in my opinion. You know, certainly, like you said, he's not making an excuse. It's an explanation. You know, it sounds like, from what everybody's telling me, this customer had come in for quite some time, long before the sting happened. And I agree with you, Mr. Mayor. Everybody should be ID'd regardless of whether they're a regular or not. That's why I phrase it as an explanation and not as an excuse. I know council has a concern about the relationship between Mr. Shasinski and Ms. James. I just want to reiterate the fact that Mr. Shasinski lives in Maple Grove. He has a business in Minnetonka, a business in Waconia. He's starting into the wholesale business. He obviously wasn't nearly as hands-on as he needed to be with the Forest Lake business, and as you heard from Ms. James, I think she's prepared to do that. Regardless of what their relationship is, I think the council needs to understand that Mr. Shasinski, frankly, just doesn't have the time to deal with the Forest Lake business. And I'm also going to be quite frank with you, that's probably for the best. Again, if council has any questions, concerns, please address them. And if anybody wants to hear anything else about what had happened with the customer that came in on the sting, we're more than happy to answer it.
All right, thank you. Do you know Mr. Hughes, or your name is?
Ryan Copy.
Okay. I just want to thank you for coming up and taking responsibility for what you did. Question, did you receive training from the staff there, or from the county, or anyone?
No, I did not receive training from the county or any of that, but my manager, Cole, had taken a class, the tobacco and alcohol, like, to check IDs. And I've, since failing this thing, I've actually been trying to look on the Forest Lake website and trying to find classes that I can take to help myself improve on identifying underage minors.
So, how many times a day, a week, would you estimate you have underage buyers getting turned away, or?
Usually on the daily, for me, at least, two to three times. Mostly, they're all usually 18, but it's usually two to three customers.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Do you guys allow people under the age of 18 in the establishment? In order to, it's kind of a hangout location. So, do you allow minors to loiter there?
Not necessarily loiter. If they are a minor, we do try and find out, but you're usually just, like, I'm in there, and I am 16 years old, so I can't necessarily say that we do not allow minors in there, considering I am a minor.
Any other questions?
I have a question for, actually, it's Chief Peterson. Other than the, I'll call it the sting operation, have you had other complaints of this establishment serving minors?
Yeah, we have had a few complaints. Those that we have heard have been in the schools, and parents being told, or telling us of potential kids, underage kids buying at the establishment. That was a while ago. I don't have those dates in front of me. And then the last two complaints that we received on November 28, I believe it was, one was an anonymous complaint, another one was an individual of a parent of a minor that told the parent that they had been in there and had bitten.
And then the second question I have of you is, could you elaborate how the person that is sent in, in this case, you're telling me that she purchased prior to that with an illegal ID, how does that person get selected?
Well, in that case, I am not sure. I did not know about that until they had just mentioned it. I don't know the facts.
How do you, do you go through the school? How do you get the people you're sending in?
Usually, yeah, when we have a compliance check, what we do is we utilize, usually they're like police explorers from another jurisdiction. A lot of times, it might be from Washington County, and they know and have done these before and assisted other agencies. So, we'll reach out to either them or someone who's a little bit further away from our jurisdiction. So, they usually don't have ties.
Thank you.
Was this person not from this jurisdiction?
That I do not know. I am unsure.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I do believe I can answer that. Well, at least partially. I know she works very near the store. I don't know where she lives or where she goes to school, but I do know, at least in terms of her employment, it's nearby.
Okay. Any other questions?
No, just a comment. I have, you know, when this happened the first time, when, was it a year ago, or whatever it was?
That is correct.
I always wanted to made to mention, or made, talked about the fact that I believe in second chances. And then this comes up over and over and over again. And then, we give you a week for the, you know, council, you know, for council, and then we get two more reports in one week. Is CloudX not getting it? What's going on?
I will say, council member, there were no failed stings over this past week. Anybody can call in. Anybody can say that there's an issue. If it's a competing business, they know that CloudX vape is under scrutiny. We can't double-check those people without getting some additional information. It doesn't sound like the chief police gave any additional information. They didn't fail any stings. I don't know if they attempted any stings during that time, but certainly none were failed. And the point is, again, what I'm trying to make here is, I think there's major factors that should weigh in CloudX vape's favor. One being the complete change of hierarchy here, and second being, there are extenuating circumstances. People can get a hold of fake IDs. You know, I somewhat agree with the metaphor that Ryan gave. You know, if you're in the bar every single day, they're not going to check my ID every single day. Should they? Absolutely, they should. Realistically, are they? They're not. It's just the reality. Again, it's not an excuse. Everybody that came up here took responsibility for the action. It's certainly an issue. If they fail another sting, it's a big problem. I completely and wholeheartedly agree. This is a completely different situation. As with last year, it was two in a row right at the beginning. They got off on the wrong foot. They went a year, they passed a bunch of stings, and here we are, back with. They went a year, they passed a bunch of stings, and here we are back with what appears to be a different situation. And again, I think those factors should weigh in favor of CloudX vape. Do I think that they should get off with the slap on the wrist? Slap on the wrist? Probably not. Do I think that their license should get revoked and the business fail? I don't believe that that would be a fair outcome.
If my memory's correct, and it is failing, so maybe it's not, but I think the last time that we had this situation and you were granted, I guess, a pass to keep your license, part of those, if I remember right, part of the circumstances were that your employees would all be trained, not just managers. So here we have a situation where this individual just admitted he was not trained, the manager was, but the manager's not there all the time.
I think part of that, just to clarify, I don't know if all the employees were required, but they were required to get training, but the other part was that they were to install that electronic age verification system.
Which I think they did.
But they weren't using it. That's a problem. I mean, I'm in line at the gas station, and it doesn't matter who you are, you have to get an ID to buy a pack of cigarettes.
Mr. Mayor, I don't disagree with you.
So, doesn't do any good to install equipment if you're not using it, and that was part of the agreement as well, so.
I would just say, you know, just from a legal perspective, when someone presents, and again, it obviously didn't happen in this case, when someone presents a good and valid ID and it passes the scanner, that is a defense to selling to underage minors, whether it's alcohol or tobacco, and that is in both the city ordinance and in the state law. I have nothing further. Again, I hope that this council reconsider's their decision. I believe that the business representatives have shown remorse, they've also shown a willingness to change, and I hope that this city council, again, gives them the ability to make amends. Thank you.
Hey, quick question.
Absolutely, sir.
Are there security cameras on the premise?
That I do not know. I'd have to defer to...
Yes, they are. They were just recently installed, I think, three weeks ago.
Okay.
Any further questions?
I don't have any. Anyone else? All right, let's open this up to council discussion now.
I have a clarifying question for Bridget. Bridget, tonight's decision is separate and completely separate from what might be coming from a future license request from a potential future change in structure, correct? Like, tonight is a decision based on current license holder. Any future license discussions will be a completely separate council action at a different time. Is that correct?
Yes, Mayor, members of the council, that is correct. There has been a license application, as noted, submitted for a different entity for a tobacco license at the physical location where the CloudX vape store is located, but that application is in process. Processing is not completed. That application is not before the council for consideration this evening. The evening's agenda item is council consideration of taking any or no, I guess, licensing action, adverse licensing action against the existing license holder, which is the CloudX vape LLC entity.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. To me, it's clear. I mean, you know, we've given second chances, third chances. It really bothers me, the game to change the name on a license, or, you know, forget to put your middle name in for background check, or this or that, that's happened. And I think we've been more than fair, and I don't understand why they're not checking every single ID every time. But the atmosphere there is a hangout for kids, and I'm done. It's, for me, it's time to revoke.
I thought part of that implementation of the ID equipment to check IDs was that was necessary to complete the sale. Is that not true?
It depends on, I think, the system they're using. Maybe the chief can elaborate on that a little more.
That was what I understood, some can be hooked up directly.
Are you familiar with the card reader systems at all?
I am not.
Okay.
What I thought in the last discussion, I think, go ahead.
Your honor, members of the council, if I may clarify, I know there was a lot of discussion at the council level when the initial resolution that was adopted back in February was proposed. The resolution itself imposed a five-day license suspension, but then vacated that if, in fact, by March 1st, there was an operational electronic age verification device. So the resolution did not mandate the use of that with every sale, it just mandated that it be purchased, installed, and operational. And so staff did verify that as of that date, March 1st, that system was operational. There is no information before you, at least from the city's perspective, regarding how often it's used, if it's used, if it's operational today, and I don't know if the applicant has any information on that, but the city doesn't have any further information other than knowing that that was, in fact, installed by the city established deadline.
Thank you. To me, there's no excuse for not using it. It's such a simple thing, you swipe on a card.
I feel like we've, we've had all the discussions and done everything that we can, given second chances, third chances. The penalty's clear, it's not council shouldn't consider, it's council shall revoke a license on a third failure, and we have a third failure. I agree with you, Mayor.
Yeah. Thank you. Any other discussion?
No, I'm just looking to make a move.
Come on up.
To be honest with you, I might have spelled my name wrong, we all make mistakes, but you guys definitely gave me a check and spelled my name wrong in there, too. And I have proof of that. I know you guys just keep saying that, and I kind of get, you know, everyone does make mistakes.
And then I wanted to say, Mayor, you took my words in, you took my words in wrong. I didn't say that we don't use a card reader. We do use it every time. It's just when you build a relationship with the customer, they were in, she was in there the day before, and then this happened. So I don't, I just, it just happened. Again, I'm sorry that it happened, but we use it every time.
So does a card reader must keep a record, or what?
You guys never requested a certain card reader. The one we got, you literally just swipe, it tells you your age, and then we go on forth, like, we keep, that's all it does. You swipe it, says the age, and then I go.
And if it says Arab, beeps.
And I have been using, I mean, that's the last thing I'm asking up here for, is saying that we're going to work it together on figuring this out. We have been using that card reader, we did swipe it. I just find it kind of odd that we were swiping a card, and it's been working, and then we kind of get screwed over in the end that she was using a fake, and that happens a lot.
So swiping the card and verifying age is one part of IDing somebody, you also have to make sure that the ID in your hand is the same person you're looking at.
And they have, I believe, right?
Yes.
They have been looking at that.
So this is one of the three strikes that got you here. If you guys had some video surveillance that you could have shown that says, hey, she was here these days, and it passed IDs, I mean, there'd be a little bit more to go on than just some words here.
So I'm not able to, we're not able to sell the company to anyone, I just want to know about that, too, on that part. Oh, is that a different discussion, a different time?
You can sell the company to anybody you want, but they're still bound to apply for a license.
No, I know, so we can come up here, it's worth going through all this. I'm just trying to say, you guys made it sound like you guys don't want to go through the writing of just switching the license over to someone else. Have I heard that right when I was sitting down?
We haven't. You can't do that anyway.
Did I hear something, like?
We can't just transfer it.
Oh, no, I understand that. All right. But, all right, oh. So, no, I guess we'll just sell it and whatnot, so. But I do want to, I guess I'm just rambling up here, and it's kind of irritated, I guess anyone would be, but the licensing thing with the, you know, you guys did pay me a check for whatever, the money back, and I just think it's odd that you guys keep saying that I spelt my name wrong for, on purpose, for a background check. I know I have a felony, and to be honest with you, it was for selling an ounce of weed when I was 18. I made mistakes, I threw them myself, I have three businesses now, and I'm very proud of myself. And you guys keep saying that I'm trying to hide myself from a background check, but you guys spelled my name wrong on the check. And that's, you guys make a mistake, too. Is there anything to that, in this saying, you guys, you know?
I don't think that's, you know, I mean, that's...
No, I'm just trying to say, though, to show you guys, though, so I'm not this guy trying to hide my background check. It was a background check, I know I have a felony, and to be honest with you, it's getting expunged here in the next, like, six months, so it'll be off my record, and you guys didn't need to know what it was for, but that is what it's for, and I don't think that's, you know, I was 18, I made a mistake.
No, that's fine. We understand that part of it.
I know this was at the last discussion, I just didn't so happen to be here, so I just want to let you guys all know, that's kind of what's going on here. But, you can go.
And I would just like to say, this one mistake that I made, it would, it would really hurt me to see our, other company come down because of that one. Or like, something bad extremely happened because of my one little mistake. Like, I just want to say, like, I'm a young person, I can make mistakes in my life, I'm pretty sure everybody has made a mistake, and I am coming to full acceptance of that mistake, and I would like to take responsibility for it, but I don't want to see my company hurt because of it.
Thank you very much. Very adult of you, and I appreciate that. And it's not, you know, this isn't because of one mistake. It's because there's, seems to be an atmosphere of not trying to do the right thing, always coming up with a reason why not. That's what frustrates me. If, if I had two violations on there, I'd be really diligent about making sure everybody gets checked. And I'm sure those machines, or there's machines out there that log, I mean, every, every computer, every credit card, every, everything prints a log at the end of the day that I know of, if you want to print it out. So, you know, but yeah, there's no video, there's no log, there's no anything, and honestly, I just don't, my personal, I believe that, you know, the police and the person that they used was their ID, and it was honest, and I don't think she's using a false ID at other times. And I, I just have a hard time believing that. I really, truly have a hard time believing that she's using a false ID, but then comes in with a real ID for a police sting, just to set you guys up. I don't think our police would do that, I think they have a lot more important things to take care of than that. But unfortunately, we're here today to deal with this general business practices that aren't acceptable in our community. Thank you. Losing my voice here.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion for, that we pass Resolution 1203-1802.
All right, give a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Your honor, sorry, just for point of clarification regarding the motion. Number one, I did want to clarify that Exhibit number one, as referenced in the resolution, consists of pages 55 to 91 of your packet, which is our, which consists of Exhibits 1 through 7. So Exhibits 1 through 7, when it references Exhibit number 1, it's referring to those pages, pages 55 to 91 on your packet, and I want to confirm that that is what the maker of the motion and the seconder of the motion understand comprises the record in this case. And secondly, I would note that on the section 3.11 of the motion, there is a place to fill in the date and month for the effective date of that revocation.
Thank you, Bridget. Yes, confirm that that does include the exhibits that you outline, as you outlined, and I would make the motion that is effective immediately.
Can I make a friendly amendment to that? We're all trying to be pro-business, supporting everybody. I would like to give them a day or two. I mean, I don't want to just unlock the doors tomorrow. Chief Peterson, would you be acceptable with that, to give them a day or two on their license before we revoke it?
Yeah, it's your decision. I've got no problem with that.
I mean, there is staff, there's other things that they need to deal with, so I would, 24-hour, one day anyway, maybe, Wednesday or something.
My concern is they have inventory that needs to be sold as soon as possible, and given that they will no longer have a license, license at a certain date, the motivation to do the right thing is decreased. So if, that's, that's my concern, is a fire sales every 12-year-old in the city, to be frank. So that concerns me. It doesn't mean that they can't be open as a business and close down shop and do things to close, they just can't sell tobacco. And you would have an opportunity to wrap things up. My concern of extending for a couple of days is that there's a risk of there's no longer a motivation to check any licenses.
I kind of agree with Councilman Baines that it should be effective immediately, but they should be allowed to do the things that are not selling retail, but if they need to move inventory to their other locations and those kinds of business decisions should be allowed.
Sell all the inventory they want outside of the city of Forest Lake, fine, they still have a lease, they still have access to their inventory, it's just the ability to sell tobacco within Forest Lake.
Is that, is that the only product they sell there? I mean, are there other?
And that I don't know as well, I wasn't sure on that. That's why I agreed that if they're open for another day, that selling the other product, whatever that is, as long as it's not e-cigs or tobacco products, but if that's the only inventory they have, then of course I would, I would rather have them not be open because of the concern that the product could be sold.
And we're not, Bridget, you...
And we can't be there, you know, all day.
Bridget, we're not closing the business, we are just revoking the license to sell tobacco products, correct?
Correct. So tobacco products, Mayor, member of the council, includes any product containing nicotine, which is my understanding primarily what they sell, so any of the e-juice, and maybe council can clarify what their other inventory looks like, as well as nicotine delivery devices, and if they have tobacco or tobacco products, I don't have any information as to whether that's part of their inventory, if they're solely an e-juice seller, for lack of a better term.
Did you want to?
I'm not interested in clarifying at this point, but I will say, my assumption is that the council can't prohibit them from selling anything, it's just tobacco products, correct?
They can sell all the liters they want, I assume, to...
Yeah.
If they want to sell contraptions that people use to smoke the tobacco, is that something that's considered, too?
They'd have to refer to the law.
But isn't, isn't the license to operate the business?
No.
So, Mayor, members of the council, the language in the code reads that no person shall sell or offer to sell any tobacco, tobacco products, nicotine, or tobacco-related device, without first having obtained a license to do so from the city. So the license is for the sale of anything that falls under those categories.
So do they have a, two licenses?
No, it's one license. So the tobacco license is kind of the archaic term that this falls under, so e-cigs and e-juice and all of that, that's wrapped up into what's called a tobacco license. The city doesn't have a separate license for products that contain nicotine. The tobacco license, as it's called, is a license to sell tobacco, tobacco products, nicotine, or tobacco-related devices. So to the extent that they have that in inventory, that is what could not be sold without a license. So upon revocation of the license, those products may not legally be sold at that location.
They could transfer inventory to another jurisdiction, however, that where they were licensed.
My, there's nothing in the city code that would prohibit it, let's put it that way.
Well, and this doesn't prohibit someone else from obtaining a license from the council.
Mayor, members of the council, that's correct. This license is solely for the license holder, which is that CloudX vapes LLC entity.
My motion stands as originally made with the immediate effective date.
That's fine. Did we have a second on that?
I had the second.
You had the second. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? End of statement. All right, motion carries. And Hannah, 2019 budget hearing. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. What you have before you today, also in your budget memo that was in your packet, is the property tax levy for 2019, as well as the general fund budget for 2019. In your budget memo, there are a few other funds that we're proposing budgets for tonight, but we're not asking for the approval of those funds at that, at this time. The approval for the other funds will be coming at the next meeting, but we are open for questions and concerns on those, those other fund budgets. So with the proposed 2019 levy, it is the same levy that we did bring forward in September. So we have our different parts of the levy, we have our general operations at about 7.5 million for 2019, our capital equipment levy, which... Our capital equipment levy, which we did increase slightly due to some capital that we're hoping to afford within twenty nineteen, according to our CIP plan. The gravel road improvement levy was something that was added at the preliminary acceptance of this levy, just to give the city some more funds, so that if down the road, the city had a share of that, that improvement cost, those funds would continue to grow. As well as the debt service levy, the twenty twelve A bonds did mature here in twenty eighteen. So there's no longer a debt service levy needed for those principal and interest payments. Overall, we're looking at a proposed levy of about ten point five million, or a four point six percent increase. With this levy, we're looking at a general fund budget, balanced budget. So we're seeing total revenues and expenditures as a total increase of zero point two percent. Here's a good graphical representation of our twenty nineteen budget revenues and expenditures. The biggest revenue source of the city is the property taxes. That's also supplemented with licenses and permits, as well as some grants with intergovernmental revenue, charges for services and some other miscellaneous items. On the expenditure side, a large portion of the general fund expenditures are related to public safety, followed by the general government and public works. With that certified levy, we just looked at a couple of slides ago. You can see that right in the middle here. And the big question a lot of times is, how does, how is that levy affecting our residents? And we, if we look at our levy compared with the tax capacity numbers that we get from the county, we get to see our city tax rate. You can see that on the bottom compared to twenty eighteen, we're looking at about forty point three percent. So that is a decrease from twenty eighteen. Some historical data of some of these tax capacity and tax rate numbers. Taxable market value and total tax capacity. The total tax capacity is a product of the taxable market value, so they do move slightly in tandem. As you can see, the total tax capacity has been slightly increasing in the city since twenty thirteen. As well as the history of the tax levy, the tax levy has historically been increasing. But if you take a look on the right here, for our tax rate, we're proposing a forty point three percent tax, city tax rate this year, which would be actually the lowest tax rate since twenty twelve, where there was a thirty seven point seven percent tax rate. Another history, just the population, so the, you know, increasing population of the city of Forest Lake. And with that, when we saw the tax rate a couple of slides ago, that forty point three percent, we wanted to give some examples. We're not disclosing the properties that these are, but these were some of the proposed tax forms that were sent out to Forest Lake property owners. So the first one we, example we have here is a average value home in Forest Lake at about two hundred and forty-four thousand. Their estimated market value did increase in twenty nineteen compared to twenty eighteen at about five percent. Even though the city tax rate is decreasing about three and a half percent, since that market value is increasing, they will see a slight increase in taxes of about twenty-four dollars. And again, this is just the city portion of their taxes. Along with that, if we look at a little more expensive home at three hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars, they also had a market value increase of about five percent. With this levy that we're proposing tonight, they would see about a forty-seven dollar increase. For a home on Forest Lake at five hundred and thirty thousand, they again had about a five percent market value increase and would see about forty-six dollar increase in city taxes. Here we have a home on Clear Lake at about four hundred and nineteen thousand. They had a little bit different change in market value. Again, it's property by property. But with the tax rate that we are proposing, they would see about eighty dollar increase. All of our previous examples were for residential homesteads. So this example here is for a commercial industrial property at about eight hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. Their market value increased about four percent in twenty nineteen and they would see about a thirty dollar increase. This right here, this is a product, I'm sure all of you are aware, that Washington County sent out with those proposed taxes. One thing we just did want to highlight is that the city of Forest Lake is just a portion of that total tax. So for, this is actually the example of the average value home that we showed a couple of slides ago. And you can see that the city of Forest Lake is thirty-five percent of that total tax bill. I think it's also helpful to look at a, you know, comparison to some of our peers. This is historical data. A lot of times these tax rates get taken from audit reports, so we are a little bit lagging in, in that data. But you can see that, you know, we're within the average population on the left-hand side here with our ten other comparisons we have. And on the right-hand side, that average tax rate in twenty seventeen was about forty-four percent. And we were just below that at forty-three point five. And we're again proposing tonight at about forty point three. I am now open for any questions or comments. Again, we're asking tonight that you would approve the property tax levy for twenty nineteen and general fund budget only. But I will also open to any questions on any of the other budgets that are presented in your memo.
All right, thank you. First question, and I didn't really get an explanation of it before, but you got four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars back from a settlement at the airport. That money, I believe, originated from the general fund, but it's not in the general fund anymore. And can you walk us through where that money is?
Yeah, yep. So there is a separate fund, other than the general fund, that accounts for the airport paving project. That fund paid for all of the contractor invoices that came in, as well as the overage that was paid on the airport. And when that settlement was received, I believe a month or two ago, that was deposited into that specific fund to help cover the deficit.
So what is? That fund did not pay. My understanding is the four hundred, roughly four hundred thousand that we were short came out of our general fund. To be paid. It did not come out of the airport fund.
It might have been transferred from, or Dan?
Yeah, I can clarify that. In the simplest terms, I've had quite a long conversation with Hannah about this in the past. It basically came out of cash reserves to pay for that overage and then, correct, as well as the cash. We had a decrease in overall cash to pay for that reserve, pay for that deficit. Being that money coming back in, it's on the accounting side, that cash gets returned back into the cash reserves of the city. So it didn't come out of straight operating general fund. It was out of the cash reserve that the city had. Is that correct? That's already called the conversation that we had.
Yeah, so the city used a, uses a pool cash method. So when, you know, your cash in your bank account isn't separated out by, this is general fund, this is your airport paving fund. So the airport paving fund was actually able to go negative in cash and just use some of the, you know, other, other cash that was available. But it is shown that it has a deficit. It still has a slight deficit of about seventy-five thousand after the settlement in that fund.
So where are we now in our cash reserves?
I guess I don't have that information right in front of me and I can provide it to you at a later time.
Any other questions for Hannah?
I'm looking at a surplus left over from two thousand eighteen.
Yeah, where are we?
Yep. We'll be able to know more.
Six hundred dollars.
Yep, more with the end of the year. And we still have a tax settlement that will come in in December, as well as various bills and expenditures that are, continue to be made. So at year end, after year end, we'll have a, a good idea of what that surplus is looking like.
All right. Any other questions? I mean, without knowing where we're standing, cash reserve wires or these other funds, I'm not comfortable with setting our, our tax levy on it. I know we were really strong with, at the middle of the year meeting, you said we were way in excess on our cash reserves for the first half of the year payment from the county. So I, I just don't think it's fair to the taxpayers to be, you know, just building up these monies here if we're not utilizing them, if we don't have them dedicated to specific uses anyway. When do we have to set the levy? Is it just by the end of the year?
From a technical standpoint, I believe so.
Yeah, five business days after December twentieth, I believe. So there is a public comment period and that was noticed for today. So if the Council's contemplating continuing the item, I'd recommend that you have the public comment period, open it, close it, and then you could continue the item, if that's the will of the Council, to another meeting. But that is the deadline by statute.
Thank you, Bridget.
But it needs to get done before then, just because of the holiday stuff going on too. I mean.
Yeah, we have another.
Yeah, yeah, but I mean, the five days after the twentieth or whatever.
Yeah, the only comment I had is the tax proposals just recently came out. I don't know if everybody's had the opportunity to really digest those yet. And then that complicated by the passing of the school levy, which is going to be considerable on taxes, which is not in those proposals. And I really think we need to take a hard look at what that's going to mean to these properties. In my particular case, I'm looking at a six percent, just between the city and the government. And then add on that, the school levy, that's coming down the pike, which is going to be another five percent in my case.
Well, and I know Chief Newman's here, but I was looking at, you know, fire department budget. Where are we? We're only looking at buying one truck next year, correct?
Correct, at this time, yep.
Okay. And all our equipment, now we're at a pay-as-you-go?
Correct. And historically, when we've had surpluses last two years, most of that surplus, which has been, the main driver for all that surplus has been excess building permit revenue. We've had some pretty good years for building permit revenue. That surplus has gone to make the pay-as-you-go capital fund to basically fund those purchases. So we are able to, when the fire check purchase comes online, we do have the cash available to make those purchases. So we're trending again this year, cash positive. But historically, that cash excess has gone to capital improvement. Because if you look out five years, there's some pretty significant capital equipment needs that need to be funded. And this allows it to be pay-as-you-go versus having to go bonding for those big purchases.
Yeah. Well, and I guess Mr. Chee brought up earlier, but I don't know if it goes with more with the water discussions we have later, but where are we at with the, like the Fenway loan to the water and sewer?
That loan balance has been reduced pretty significantly. I believe last go-around, we looked at it, was probably right around a half million. So they've paid back the past four years about a half million dollars. So current policy right now, I think how the parkland dedication comes in, half of that goes to pay off the Fenway interfund loan and half of it goes to park dedication fees.
Well, there was a significant amount of that forgiven to the Fenway Park, correct?
That I don't know off the top of my head. I just know that they have been making some pretty strong efforts to get that one.
I'd like to check into that. I think it was at least a half a million or more that, you know, the city forgave themselves anyway. But still coming out of the water fund that now is short on improvements, so.
Yeah, I'd like to hear the answer on that, for sure.
Yeah, I think we have more questions than.
So just trying to reconcile for staff, kind of, some of where your point is. So is what you're saying, that you're generally okay with the budget as proposed? You just want a two week?
I think that, you know, as long as the city is, is provided for, I think it is. I mean, or, we got, Public Works, I think, has got the equipment that they need right now. Our fire department is online to improve their equipment as needed. There's no big purchases looming out there. We put two hundred thousand in the budget for, and hopefully that, that will continue every year to get these gravel roads taken care of. I think that's really imperative. But yeah, I'd, I'd like to find out where those other pockets of money are squirreled away. Because if, if we're putting it all in that, that general fund in there, let's see where that's at. Because I think we need to be fair to the taxpayers too. Where our next item is going to be talking about water rates. So if we're going to give them twenty bucks back here and, you know, take thirty dollars here, I mean, I, I'm just trying to be fair and, and, you know, put those monies back where they came from.
So would a pro forma of just all of the fund balances with some expectation of where year end is going to fall, help to make that decision? I mean, I think, I think you're, if I'm interpreting what you're looking for, you're looking for just a, an expectation where we're going to land on year end. And are we setting a budget where the, all of those monies, all of those interfund loans are where you want them to be at year end?
Correct. Now, the enterprise funds, the water and sewer are completely separate than the cash balance type general fund that we have, correct?
Correct, yep. Those are gen, those are separate funds. And you do have those budgets in front of you in your memo. But again, today, we're just asking for the proposed property tax levy and then the general fund budget.
Yeah, I kind of lean towards, I like the idea of, I'll call it a balanced budget for what we, we know what we need to operate the city next year. And if we have those revenues, I'm not a proponent of collecting more money than necessary. And I would rather see it that we lower the levy and give that money back. And I, you're not even giving it back. Don't take it to start with and let the taxpayer keep it.
I'm totally fine approving the fund, the general fund budget. We worked that over at a workshop, another meeting, and there were really no questions on it. But my question is at the levy, I kind of want to know where that surplus is at before we make that, that call.
Well.
I have no problems with the budget. I think the budget's fine.
I just got a procedural question, but we're going to open this up for public comment. Is what you're recommending tonight. And if we choose to continue part of the levy discussion, whatever we can. But maybe we should open it up to public discussion now, if there is any. And then we can bring it back to the Council. So we got that covered, so. All right, I'll open up a public hearing on our tax levy and budget. Anybody who'd like to speak, come on up.
My name is Elvin Narby, one oh two five five two seventeen. My question was, when the city took over the township, there was two different rates. The township was paying a lot less money because of our police and our protection out there anyway. And the city had higher, was paying more than we were. And I understand that the city and the township could not have two rates. So they jacked ours up, they lowered the cities, I hear, a little bit. How much is coming back into the township? Actually, I'm not being nasty, I'm just saying, is that I've been here twenty years and in a week. And to me, like Ron is saying, here, we got no streetlights out there, you know, no perks. And going back to our paving, you meant paving, they paved our road in two thousand and four on my wife's fiftieth anniversary. I come home, I had a six thousand dollar bill in my mailbox. I paid a hundred percent of that assessment against my property. The city didn't pay nothing. So what, what is the township, old, the township doesn't exist anymore, that's according to, to Mr. Husnick there. But what is coming back into the variety, like Dick was mentioning? All the money is being spent in this little four square mile area. The town, like going back into that police protection, getting our, that ninety-seven highway thing going on our North Shore Trail. There's, there's nothing, you know? So what is the township getting back from this city since they've sucked us up in two thousand and one? That's all. Thank you.
Well, I don't know if this all pertains, but that thing and them things in there, sell them, give them away. I can't read them. Ask him if he could read them, no. So either get something that we can see or get rid of the whole works. Not that my eyesight's that great, but it ain't that bad. And the other thing is, is I was just trying to listen to all this money, the airport. Why do we give money to the airport? I don't understand it. If twenty people in Forest Lake have an airplane, it seems to me, the rest of us shouldn't be paying anything for it if we don't use it. I'm not against the airport, as long as it's self-providing. And I think that's the same with the, the fire department. Now, where I live, the place is going to burn down. The chief, when I moved up here, he told me that. I came here and I says, I need a fire number. He's, where do you live? So I told him. He's, we'll be out there to bury the ashes. I don't need much help at that. The wind will take care of that. So, you know, we're being taxed equal to the people in the city and we don't have the services. So what can we do about that? Well, you can do two things. You can either lower our tax or improve our services. Those are the only two things I can see. So I don't know what you're going to do. And you talk about the money. Nobody seems to know where all the money is. You know, they've got these little pockets of money here. Nobody seems to know where all the money is. You know, they've got these little pockets of money here or there. I'd like to know the true value of our investments and the true value of our savings. So we can kind of make some better judgment calls. Thanks a lot.
Now, when I add quick like to his fire protection thing, we're in zone 10, and that's what they tell me. I had a deluxe homeowner's policy with all state. They dropped me. I brought the letter down to the old city hall years ago and tweeted to them. And I said, hey, they said the same thing. Your house is going to burn to the ground. I asked Gary, what can do I get in protection out there? And Gary, Gary Seaman just told me to move.
All right, thank you. Would anyone else? Mr. Chea?
I think that, um, we might be losing sight of who owns the money. I think the money belongs to the community, any surplus that we have. And I think that I brought to light at the last meeting, the continual raise in tax rate that we've had. I think that maybe we should take a real good look at any surplus that might be there. And we don't have to work under the premise that spend it or lose it. We can work under the premise of efficiently managing money. And so my suggestion to you is if there is a surplus, rather than spend it, reduce the levy.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak?
Nobody else here.
Going once? Going twice? All right, hearing closed. Bring it back to the council. Just for clarification, Hannah, you might, our cash balance in the bank right now is around 24 million? Or did I misread that?
I'm going to, I'm going to reference the third quarter report. Um, on page three, total cash and investments at September 30th was, was about 18.8 million dollars.
But we haven't had the, uh, last tax payment for the year, correct?
Correct, yep.
What's our anticipation for that?
Um, so we were just taking a look at page seven of your quarterly report, which is a statement of revenue and expenditures for the general fund. How the actuals are coming out through September 30th compared to annual budget, we actually are kind of anticipating to break even. Um, this year, we're not anticipating, you know, any, any huge surplus to be had at this point in time.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for Hannah? Well, um, I guess we're kind of going down two paths here. I think, you know, budget is one question and then the levy. And I don't know if we have the answers for the levy yet tonight.
Yeah, I, I think we're all pretty much in agreement that our budget is pretty in line.
I think we spent.
Yeah, I don't think we have a budget problem. I, I think what we don't know is A, how much money do we have left? And B, how much money will we have next year? If we had those numbers, I mean, then.
Agreed.
You know, that's what I'd like to see. And then if it's obviously over, then, you know, considerably over, what we need to operate the budget or to, to meet the budget, which is to operate the city, then we shouldn't be taxing those people out there for that.
Agreed. Um, I think we have some, you know, uh, kind of rolls into the, the water discussion we're going to have too. And, um, some of those facilities, but I don't think there's really any, any much we can do from the general fund if we have a surplus. There was, and Dan, if, if you can research that, there was a significant amount forgiven, but maybe it's time to pay that back and make that.
Between the Fenway and the.
Between Fenway and the, I mean, the city just wrote off part of that loan, basically.
It was a water.
Yeah, it was a water loan, and I think it was just kind of written off. Um, but maybe we need to open up.
I'll take a look. Yeah, the write-up, I don't recall. It could have very well been, but I'll, I'll double check to see.
Yeah, it was two or three years, and I don't know if it was 250,000 a year or, you know, 100,000 a year or what exactly it was. But we were just getting no, um, park dedication revenue coming in. And we had to do something for our bond rating that, you know, shows that we're paying that money back. So. Can we do this as a, a motion to approve the budget tonight and then continue the levy to the next meeting? Would that be, uh?
So mayor members of the council, that's a possibility. I would note that the resolution in your packet on page 175 actually has two separate components to it. One is the adoption of the budget. The second is the adoption of the levy. So while that's possible, alternatively, the council could also table this item, which is adoption of the budget and the levy, to the December 10th council meeting and then reconsider this resolution as prepared at that time.
Yeah, since you're considering changing the levy, you really want to wait to do both at the same time.
Sounds good. And that's sufficient time to gather those?
Yeah, yep. And we can also put together, you know, a, a table showing the cash reserves and what they need to be at year end for, for the next meeting.
All right, great. Thank you.
Just for a point of clarity, from my own understanding, you're asking for the, the, the budget itself, or actually not the budget, but the amount that we're spending is okay. It's basically just taking the levy and looking at potentially using a cash buy down of the levy rate.
Yeah, we made levy for less than the budget just to, we just got to see where that's at.
Using cash to basically buy that down to keep the, to make the budget as presented.
No, we've done that in years past when there was a surplus. We just, you know, used a cash reserve for the next year's budget.
Right. So you want us to look at the levy compared to what, what it is now to what you think you need? The budget's fine, so we'll leave the budget, general fund budget as it is. We look at the cash reserves, how comfortable we are with the cash reserves, where those are at. Make a recommendation to you what the levy should be.
There's a recommended.
And then also take a look at what the loans are from the water and sewer fund to the other particular funds that are involved and let you know.
Is it 56% or where, what, what number are we looking at for, um, cash reserves?
I believe it's 50%.
It's a little over 50, but okay.
And it could be a little over 50. Um, yep. So with, you know, with the page seven of the quarterly report, and we're not, you know, seeing that we'll have much of a surplus, we may break even. Um, there may not be, you know, much funds available in order to, to lower that levy. And also with the balanced budget, then, you know, um, our revenues with the levy currently do equal our expenditures for 2019.
Yeah, the other question I had is, right now, we're splitting, just like you mentioned before, 50/50 with dedication funds between the parks and the city, right?
Correct.
Is that something we should consider? Maybe because, I mean, I think the economy's good. We're getting more permits now than we've had, obviously, since the crash. Is that a number that we should consider changing so that we pay off that sewer fund faster?
I, I think, you know, our parks, I, I'd have to look at how much that number is for, for me. I think I'm comfortable with, you know, the 50/50 we're doing now. I don't think we should be any, any, going back to the city. Um, but once that water fund is paid off, then, you know, 100% of that will go back to park dedication fee. Um, I think it'd be more prudent for the council to, you know, direct parks where that money or how that money is really used. Because we kind of hit a, a level of how many parks can we have? As, you know, as that growth keeps going, we need to use that money for, you know, trails, for repairs, for, you know, other things as well.
The Parks Commission had a real good, honest discussion on that. Um, they beat that up for a whole night talking about being more aggressive in paying back that loan. And the scenarios they kind of threw out really tied the hands of the commission to do any kind of functions. It was one of those things, they could be more aggressive in paying back the loan, or they could actually have a commission that was active. That 50/50 is, is kind of that, that line where you can still do things for the parks and you can still pay off the obligation. So that, that was addressed this year, um, by the commission because, uh, they, that question came up too.
All right. Did you have something?
I was just going to say, I think to help this conversation next week, um, I think a full consolidating balance sheet that shows all of the funds and current balances and then projected surplus will really help us to decide where are we comfortable of the, not just a particular fund, but all the balance, all of the funds in total, as well as what might be any projected surplus and to just help facilitate that conversation. And also to answer some of the questions that have been asked tonight of, it seems like you've got a lot, a lot of little cash balances. While we, we're a city, we have a lot of funds, let's just show that whole picture.
Yep, and some of those fund balances are reserved. They're committed for certain things. So we'll also put that in our exhibit.
And then that would facilitate the conversation of, is council comfortable with the current plan of some of those interfund loan balances, which do impact the water and sewer funds that we'll be talking about, so.
All right. So we'll table this through next meeting?
Make a motion to table?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion table. Thank you. So 7D, the sewer and water storm revenue rate discussion. Okay, is that you or, was that? Oh, all right. Welcome.
Good evening. Um, well, the last time that we met, we, uh, the council had asked to make some different revisions to the overall water rate study. And so we did meet, um, with city staff and, uh, went through some different scenarios. And so this evening, we would like to share with you, um, the information that we talked about. Uh, so as we went through the water, uh, rate study, I just wanted to remind you of the various assumptions, uh, that are with, contained within the plan. There is an operating, you know, expense inflation increase of 3%. Uh, the new connections are estimated at about 101 per year. Investment income is about 1% of the prior year in the cash balance. All of the capital improvement additions, uh, we went through the capital improvement plan. And we also reconfigured as to when, uh, some of the different, um, infrastructure improvements would be made, as we discussed last time, uh, to ensure that, you know, bonding would be, uh, affordable as the city progresses through the years. So with the overall bonding, we're anticipating between the years 2019 and 2025 to have about 16,800,000 dollars of bonding. Now, as we went through, I'm going to call it scenario two, um, because as we went through the various assumptions, one of the conversation pieces that we had the last time we were here is talking about the WAC charges. Now, in, uh, encompassed within this presentation is the fact of increasing that WAC charge to the $3,600. Now, as you look at the cash flow assumptions that was in the overall report, that takes your WAC charges in 2018 at 144,583 dollars up to $363 and, excuse me, $363,600 for 2019 through the duration of the plan. Now, what this has allowed us to do is to also take a look at where do the rates fall out? Uh, council has suggested that maybe there is a larger impact at the front end of the plan and then a nominal increase in future years. So as, um, you know, one of the things I wanted to point out first, before we get into what the actual rate structure itself, is the revenue compared to the operating expenses with the, uh, plan that we have devised at this point. And as you note on the screen, um, the revenue towards the end of the plan is almost equating with our overall operating expenses. And if you look at the projected water fund cash balance, we're also right in alignment with where we need to be at in, in order to ensure we have the targeted amounts, which encompasses 100% of next year's debt service and 50% of the operating expenses. Uh, so if you look at the actual overall rates, now, um, please note that as we go through the different rates, we did bump up the 2019 rate by 18%, which equates to about $10 per quarter for the average resident at the 11,000 gallons. Now, the other point that I did want to make, point out is that although at the end of 2017, the city council did approve rate increases for 2018, those rate increases were never implemented. And so you have a, you know, lag, of course, where you have two years of the same rates, which of course is going to put the water fund behind.
Um, just a point of clarification, why weren't they implemented?
I believe the staff just missed it.
Okay.
And that percentage rate was?
6%. So that puts, that put the scenario further behind than it would have been if the 6% was implemented.
So is that staff here or was that the company that we have?
I believe it was here.
Okay. Go ahead, sorry.
Oh, all right. So then if you look at, um, the comparative to other comparable cities as we spoke about last time, if you look at Forest Lake in scenario two, to the furthest to the right, uh, it is at $53.58. Now, when we were looking at, um, putting more on the front end, like I'd mentioned before, for 2019, there'd be an 18% rate increase, which is an annual impact of $40 per year. Now, in 2020, there'd be an additional 10%. And after that, for the next two years, it would go down to seven. And then for the next six years, it would be at 3%. So if you look at, you know, 2023 and beyond, it is, you know, just more of an inflationary increase. And this does cover all the various improvements that have been programmed out within the water rate study. After a period of five years, of course, you'll likely want to reassess to see exactly what the condition of the funds are, to see if there are any future additional infrastructure improvements that are necessary or if there's other ways that you can adjust things, um, you know, based on if, uh, you know, the number of households that are added changes or any other of those economic factors, you will want to revisit it at that point. And I'd be happy to address any questions you may have.
All right, thank you. Open up the council for questions.
Well, I like that it's not a solid 10% rate for the next 15 years, so.
You know, I guess, um, the amount of money in the capital improvement in these assumptions with the, uh, rehabbing the water plants, building the water plants, putting wells in, I'm just not very happy that, you know, this wasn't in more, um, or any involvement on the council's behalf of, you know, what our needs are coming up. And this should have been, um, a subject of at least one, if not two workshops to go through that. I know when we did lift stations, there was, you know, multiple discussions. Um, I know Ryan isn't here tonight and, um, you know, he does a great job. I, you know, he's, he's on the ball on the numbers, everything else, but, um, I don't like getting railroaded. And I think that, you know, this is, needs more discussion, more planning. Are we rehabbing these treatment plants? Are we going to add on to them, build them bigger? I mean, there's, there's a lot of questions in here. I mean, I look down to 2023, they got, or what is it? Not, or is it, there's like 300, or yeah, 2021, we got $300,000 for utility billing software. That's a lot of money for software. You know, I mean, there's questions on here. I don't expect you to answer tonight. But I don't want to just approve these rates going on, a bunch of numbers thrown in here when the council hasn't had, five minutes of discussion on it. I mean, we're talking, I don't know, how many, 20, 20, 15, 18, 20 million dollars worth of project and taxes or, or billing on this. And we haven't had five minutes of discussion on it. So I'm just not really happy with how this evolved. We've been asking for, um, the AMR, the meters to have a presentation, a discussion on that. That's just $1 million out of this whole thing. And we've been asking for that for over six months, if not the last year. And it was going to come forward, it was going to come forward. And here we are with all of a sudden a million dollars on here and we haven't, you know, none of this we've had a discussion with. So I can't support any of it until we have further discussion. A lot needs to be done. Probably all of it needs to be done. But $20 million worth of project to just approve blindly, I can't go for that tonight.
So we're not approving the CIP plan, every item on the CIP plan as a final. I would expect that each one of those items come back to council on a. I would expect that each one of those items come back to council on a project by project basis. But we do need to set rate, and something north of where we are today is reasonable. And, you know, councils will have an ability to set, set rate every year and adjust based on expectation. Staff, please correct me if I say something wrong. And so I think, I don't look at this as an approval of a future CIP plan and as a cash flow. I just see it as information to help us set what the rate needs to be for this year. And what I see is we have a hole that we need to recover from. I think the question is, what's our appetite to bridge that gap?
So are the rates now adjusted before the fourth quarter bills go out?
No, they have not been. We're waiting, we were waiting until what the decision was tonight. I mean, if, if that's what we do, we will, but right now, we're, we were waiting for this financial analysis. And just somebody say, this, this, this is a very important piece, and I understand the hesitancy here, but we are setting a rate. These are important projects. They, they do two things. They keep your water system functional, which is the most important, and then this plans for growth. And that's part of the reason why, why we sat down with our financial advisor, Ann Ellers, to try to map all of this out, to make sure that the bonds and the water rates and the capital improvement plan all mesh together. That's what this is. You're right that you don't have to approve all seven to ten years of water rates, but this is what the plan looks like. Sooner or later, you're going to have to do all of these projects, whether you care for it, to do them or not. And it just depends on when we're going to do them, and some of these, we can't wait. I mean, for example, the, the AMR and meters, we should replace your meters, you're losing money because the meters aren't accurate. That's a priority. I mean, why, you know, and I, I don't know the history of when we were supposed to have a presentation or not, but we should be doing the meters. We should be rehabbing our, our current system and providing backup wells for that hot summer day when we don't make it. You know, it's, the, the ongoing maintenance and the ongoing upkeep of the system is the most important here. And one of the reasons we looked at the WAC fees in this scenario is, is because we know some of this is future growth and for future capacity. And that's why the WAC, which is, will be paid for those people who come in the future and not on the rate payers. We try to keep the rates as low as possible for current rate payers by raising them for those people who are going to connect to the system on a later date.
All right, thank you. So in, in scenario number two, for two thousand nineteen, you're asking for a eighteen percent increase, and in two thousand twenty, another ten percent increase. Is that based on, over and above the six percent increase that was already for this year, or is that based on?
This is based on two thousand seventeen rates, because two thousand seventeen and two thousand eighteen rates were consistent.
Okay. So the six percent in between there hasn't been accounted for?
That is correct.
All right, thank you. All right, opener for discussion?
You know, I've said this before, you know, this stuff is projected out ten years, and thank you for doing that. Five years, it might change, or less. And, but, you know, I sure share Patrick's concerns about the things that have been not taken care of. We need to be doing something with our water treatment plants and, and, and planning for the future here. And I, I think initially, we need to, as painful as it is, to, to move ahead and get that rate up where it should have been. I mean, we're, we're already past that six percent that was, we lost out on for two years, my understanding of it, so.
One year anyway.
Well, one year, two thousand seventeen and eighteen, right?
Oh, we did one in seventeen, I just did the other six percent. Uh, Dave, how, I mean, how much involvement are you with these new plants and rehab plant?
Quite, quite involved. The numbers are consistent with the two thousand fourteen water, water system study, which laid out three halves to each of the plants, the new tower, the new plant. So that was all presented to city council in two thousand fourteen. Basically, the, the upgrades are just the cost now of shifting it five years or six years. So that really it's changing your filter media, updating your valves, big chunk of our controllers. Our SCADA system is obsolete to get parts. Our vendor is actually robbing from other cities that have upgraded to save their parts to kind of patch ours together. So that system's big, it not only runs our plants, but also runs all over lift stations. So if that were to go down, that wouldn't be very good. I mean, it's just a lot of maintenance that, that hasn't happened. A lot of plant one and three is to separate the plants. They, they can't run independently right now. Upgrading water plant two is the same thing, just stuff that's, it's old.
And do the prices for those include secondary wells on those, or?
That would be the new well in the CIP, that would be the secondary well for water plant two. So water plant one and three already have two wells. They can run either plant, so they have redundancy built in there to.
So the new well would be proposed with the new tower on the south end, is that, or?
No, the new, the, the new water plant would come with the well. And then this, this additional well would be redundancy for the plant, for water plant two and the new plant. So you'd have a backup well. Because right now, if, if water, if well number four went down, we couldn't even operate water plant two. So we just, that new one is to, to be built in redundancy, just like you have two pumps on a lift station. You don't need two pumps, but you need one in there. If the other one fails, that's why, that's why it's there.
So being that it's a redundant well, does that still require fairly extensive DNR permitting? Or is there an easier path on that one?
Anytime you want to punch a hole in the ground, it's going to require permitting. I, I think our, our toughest task, I don't think the task to get a well is going to be that difficult, being that we're doing the water efficiency and all the stormwater reuse. And I think we're really showing as a city that, you know, we're trying to protect the water. The, the difficult struggle is to try to get back in the Mount Simon, to get, to get that one six hundred feet down. You know, on top of that, if we can't get in there, it'll change our process for our plants, because right now, we don't have to treat for a lot of different, I mean, even our iron, we don't have barely any in the Mount Simon. So if they don't let us drill deep, that would change how we have to design a water plant as well. Just different, you know, just to treat different, different waters. So I think that would be the, the toughest task and our most important task is to get the DNR to let us go back in the Mount Simon.
So what are your thoughts why our rates are pushing the top end currently? If we're in such good water supply versus, you know, like Lionel Lakes and other places that seem to have much lower rates?
There's some, some cities that don't have much for treatment, that, you know, like Stillwater, for example, they don't have a water treatment plant. They just treat inline, you know, they just shoot chlorine and fluoride right inline, so they don't have a structure with, with a bunch of, you know, equipment in it. There's some, some that don't have a lot of water towers, they're just on pressure tanks, they don't have to worry about, you know, we have a long distance to push, to push water as well. So, I mean, there's a lot of things that kind of come in to why we're at, where we're at. Just because you're in the Mount Simon is one good thing, but you still got to push the water to everybody. You know, that's, the distribution is.
Well, before we go ahead with like rehabbing all these plants, do you think it would make sense to look at different types of treatment, like Stillwater or other places do?
The, the one problem here is that we soften water. So you basically need a plant to, to have your big water softeners in, to soften your water before it goes out, out to the houses. I mean, that, that's one thing that you really can't, in, in line in a house, that's completely different than, you know, pumping out a thousand, thousand gallons a minute.
Okay. Any other questions?
I think a lot of, a lot of good thought went into capital, uh, plan outweigh there. It would have been nice to hear some more information along the way, but I don't doubt it. One thing it's sad to look at is that missed out on that six percent, and then you look at the interest and all the other things lost. So if you want to look at two thousand nineteen at eighteen percent, it would be more like ten or twelve. We're playing catch-up again.
Yeah, we are.
Always doing that.
We, we knew to some degree that, I think council has known that we've played, we're playing catch-up. It was a, you know, intentional decision a couple of years ago that we were going to focus first on sewer and got the lift stations where they needed to be, knowing that water was following, and so here we are.
Yeah, not really. I mean, water was never discussed. You know, we, we talked about putting a new well in, and it was said we didn't need one, because the, the, number one, the DNR probably wouldn't give it to us, because we have plenty of capacity. So we focused on meeting our, our current needs, lift stations. But no, water wasn't ever a major discussion or anything brought up. If it would, we would have balanced the two out, you know, we would have maybe set back a couple of lift stations and did a little bit of the water system instead. But, you know, I, that's why I'm really frustrated about this, because it just seems like, you know, bring it up at the last minute. Oh, by the way, we got to do all this all at once now. No, we, um, we were watching, you know, we, we can only do what was brought up. And lift stations was a big project, but it was well within our means. And, you know, if, if it would have meant spending money on water, we would have done that too. It would have been nice to have this staged out a little bit longer, so the impact wouldn't be nearly as much.
I think what concerns me a lot is that, as many of the people that came up here and spoke, you know, the, we're not increasing our water supply a whole lot to new areas, or forcing more people to hook up. And yet the costs just keep, are rising considerably. But to me, the answer is you need more customers, you need something besides just raising the rates.
You know, it factored in the WAC increase, I think it's about three per.
Thirty-six hundred.
Thirty-six hundred.
What's that right now?
Eighteen hundred.
So you're doubling.
So we're doubling it. That's what's going to enable you to expand. The other token, you still have to weigh out. Are you going to, are you going to trench down eight feet and lay a, lay your water line after doing all the footwork and red tape just to supply one cul-de-sac here and there that are on the outside? Probably not, but getting that WAC fee up there so we can start getting ready to extend out to those other neighborhoods, future expansion. That's something we're definitely chasing here.
Yeah, well, and I, I agree the WAC fee is, increase is good. But, you know, just looking at some of the details, I mean, you know, meter fee, I agree, we should have had a meter fee. We've got, you know, we should be implementing one. But for residential meter, whatever meter we're putting in here, you know, whether it's a four, you know, I guess I'm looking at, you know, like a, the five ace or one, you know, it doesn't matter what size meter, we got two dollars, three dollars a month. And when you got a thousand dollar meter and you're paying three dollars a quarter for using that meter, it's never going to get replaced again. You know, when somebody's got that size meter, you know, they should be paying fifty bucks a quarter, or twenty bucks a quarter or something, so that, that fund just to replace those meters is self-sustaining. Otherwise, we're going backwards again. I mean, we're, we're adding fees. I don't like adding fees, but, you know, when they're going to something specific and paying for that piece of equipment, it should be logical to put in there. I just, I hate getting into all the little nitty-gritty details. I think that it's more of, again, a workshop where we can go through it. But I wish we would have had time to have a couple of discussions on this. We have to do something, so we, we need that, we need to do something, we need to start something. But yeah, there's no way I can support eighteen to twenty percent increase on, on that. Not until we have a better scenario, how to, you know, how things are going to stage out and move forward. You know, how many discussions do we have on SRC now? And that was a three dollar, or dollar, whatever it was, it was, it was minor compared to this. And that seemed to encompass several meetings.
I, I can't argue that at all. You know, we hired AEM here to, to do the financial analysis and, and show us what the actual numbers are. And then we gave staff the direction to go back and rework it, and they came back a little more favorably, so.
Now, they stacked it at the front end instead of just doing a, you know, increase all along. It is what it is. I mean, going by the projected expenditures, that's what we're going to have to charge. I think it's our job to, you know, review those expenditures and, you know, have, have that discussion before we commit. I mean, we, I would like to see something tonight. I mean, we have a six percent that should be increased already. We need to do something, but I just don't, I can't support eighteen percent increase. I just, it, it doesn't, it's too much all at once without having a solid foundation, discussions by the council, how that money is going to be used. I mean, we got some numbers thrown on our spreadsheet, but we really haven't been able to ask those serious questions. And the questions like, you know, why is one city doing this? Why are we doing that? I mean, we're just rehabbing the same plants. Maybe it's time that we look at. I never, you know, I mean, those plants were paid for. They're, you know, the brick and mortar part of it is not as important as, you know, the mechanics inside, and is there different technology? Is there different ways? Why are we softening? Do we need to soften the water? You know, all those questions need to be answered. I think water quality is number one, and I think Forest Lake does a phenomenal job on their water quality. I just wish we, I wish when they put the sewer lines around the lakes, it would have ran water at the same time. Made no sense. It still doesn't. And part of that too, like Ed pointed out, is, you know, how do we get, keep extending that water line out? Yeah. The WAC fee, thirty-six hundred, we doubled it. I, I think that's fair. You know, maybe it should be higher. I don't know, but.
Well, I'd just like to mention, like, Mr. Cheeto is up here, he's building a new home. If the option was there for him to hook up the city water versus him doing his own well, I think it would have been a no-brainer for him to hook up the city water. He would have had better quality water, and he wouldn't have to worry in the future, five years from now, I got to replace my well. And it was just two, three weeks ago, we had a gentleman in a open forum, the same thing. He spent eleven thousand dollars to do his own well. He's got his own septic. I mean, somewheres, we have to come up with a plan to say, and I don't know if you can legally, I don't believe you can legally force people to hook up, but you can sure make it attractive enough that they might want to. But if it's not there, if it's not even a choice, you're never going to get any new customers, and you're always going to be facing this.
Well, and adding that water to those areas, you know, also brings fire protection, you're going to have hydrants there. And I know you were talking five hundred feet, it probably, probably would have been cheaper to run that five hundred feet line than to drill a well to begin with. But yeah, we have to deal with, you know, how do we, how do we retrofit that into areas that are already grown? You know, people aren't going to be that receptive to adding on to it now, but we can't, we can't deal with all that tonight. We need to set, we need to do some type of rate, and, you know, I'm, I'm just not, there's no way at eighteen percent. I mean, I just can't see that. No, I, I mean, three, six percent, you know, that, three percent is inflation or wherever we're at now. So six percent that we should have done is reasonable. To me, you know, bumping that six percent again somewhere in that neighborhood, just so there is some revenue starting to flow in there. That allows the council to have a lot of serious discussions as to, you know, what is the best policies to proceed with on getting that water system taken care of?
I don't have any feeling we're being misled here by any of the numbers spread by staff or the needs for the projects. I definitely can agree that the, the clarity and the, and just having more information on what's going to happen and why needs to be out there, and there's not, definitely not the time for it this year yet. But a suggestion maybe the council could go for, tabling this vote along with the levy in the general fund of next week, maybe get an information piece from Dan Engineering here to kind of share what's going to happen, just a real touch and go. Just to be informative, so we know where that money is going. And then also, we can take a look at any surplus we could apply it possibly here as far as paying back. That kind of gives more information and a bigger picture.
Okay, question for Patrick or Dan. The WAC fee itself, do we need a resolution or vote to raise that?
It'd be part of the fee schedule. It's included in the fee schedule. Once you adopt the fee schedule, it's in the fee schedule, so it will increase.
Okay, so that'll be right in there then, and, okay. I don't think we'll have too many permits come in between now and then, anyway, so. I just kind of wanted to deal with it in pieces anyway.
Yeah, I, I'm unsure of what the request was, if you tabled it, what the information is for next week that we could gather in four days and bring back to you. I'm just not sure what that would be.
It'd be hard, just maybe if Dave and Ryan could come up with an explanation of the projects.
Just want the breakdown of why we got that dollar amount on the CIP.
Just want the breakdown of why we got that dollar amount on the CIP, what it's involved of that dollar amount.
Yep, it doesn't need to take all night, but just to bring in, because, you know, we're looking at numbers on paper and very brief description of what the project is.
Yep.
So if it gets something of that nature, it would be helpful in understanding what we're doing and why we're doing it. Again, to me, it's just an understanding piece, and then as we talked about, what we have for a surplus, maybe applying it and paying back that forgiven balance, you know, we can throw that dollar amount back to the water fund. It kinda gets us still turning in the direction we wanna go.
It's getting in that direction, and, you know, I just, the dollars, you know, the numbers speak for themselves, they're there. I mean, it's, if you gotta put a roof on your house, you're gonna have to put a roof on your house. I just don't want that impact so severe in one or two years. I think, you know, it, as we come up with those plans, we need to ramp up too. I mean, we have that six percent that's going on already, you know, I just, you know, somewhere between that and eighteen is where I wanna come into, I mean...
You get last year's six percent, you get three percent, your cost inflation was sitting at nine. So eighteen seems relatively large when you're pushing that number when you take a look at playing catch-up just flat on numbers, that's kinda where they sit.
I don't know if, I don't even know if we are playing catch-up, I mean, you know, I, it is where it is, but, you know, for the last two years, the last four years on this council, we were not in any, you know, urgency for dealing with water. We've been asking for water meter information all summer, that's never come forward, and now all of a sudden we got this critical emergency that we have to raise, and raise our rates to get eighteen million dollars, and I just, it's not there for me yet. I need to, you know, deal with that a little bit more, but we need to have a plan to make that a little bit more palatable for the consumers of that. And, you know, where are we at with water rates? I mean, we're high already, if we're trying to attract businesses that use a lot of water, you know, are, do we have a, you know, a scale for that, you know, somebody that's gonna use hundreds of thousands of gallons of water? You know, that, that alone is a factor we haven't talked about. The WAC fees, do we still have a water area charge as well that goes on the building permits?
Yes.
Yeah, with develop, well, land development, there's a area charge that's associated per acre, developable acre that comes online.
And how, I mean, how are we there? I mean, is that something we need to look at raising too?
I don't have the average in front of me, I, we can pull averages for area charges as well.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I mean, there's so many questions so far.
Go ahead. Question for Dave, out of comparable cities here, any idea how many of them, other than us, soften their water?
Can you go back to that?
Yeah, I don't think it's only soften, I think it's the way they treat, and if they have to treat it. I think that, not that the comparison is a bad one, it's just I think there's a little apples to oranges going on with this comparison as far as the way...
Correct. Softening's flat out expensive.
Right, but also there's different treating that we may do and they don't do, and we probably will have to clarify that.
Sure. Ed?
I think, and I'm gonna go back to what we don't like to talk about, the farmer township versus the city. If I'm not mistaken, the city softened their water, the township did not, is that true?
Yeah, they capped the well, you couldn't use the well by the high school.
That's not capped.
It's not preferred, it's capped in the news.
So, I guess my question is, I know, obviously, you're doing it to protect the life of the equipment and the pumps and lines and all that when you soften, but the township didn't soften, so, there must be some middle ground in between somewhere.
You'd run into an issue there as well because there's a lot of homeowners in the city that don't have water softeners in their house because of that reason, so if you quit softening your water...
No, I fully understand what the impact of softening versus no softening is, it's just...
Yeah. Comes down to that level of service, kinda like salting streets, which, what level of service we can provide. We got on board with softening water a while back, and that's where we're sitting now. It's a discussion that can be had, but now I don't think's the time, we're too far into this, under the timeline here. But just to make that point, when you look at the water rates on, I'm looking at page eight here of, I guess, Packet Page 183, you gotta look at other cities that are softening. Do you have that information, ma'am?
I do not.
So, I mean, you're trying to do an apples to oranges, as Patrick had pointed out here, the cost of softening is, I mean, softening's not required. The only thing required in this state is that it's safe to drink and that you're putting fluoride in the water, it's not even a mandate to chlorinate. So, we're going above and beyond on our quality of water we're shipping out. That's the standard we have set for residents, and if that's something we wanna continue, we have to start putting like water in the system. My understanding of the reason we're not using the well on the system that we have next to the high school is because it's in a different aquifer, and you have a different quality of water, and it's gonna need a softening system in order to blend those waters in there. So you're having like water in the system, and there's maintenance issues, and there's a lot of other conversations in science that can go into this conversation, that can take hours and days to get to that, but trying to keep things moving along here, yeah, we're at the upper end, but we're also offering a better product.
Are we?
Yes.
I mean, I, you know, I mean, we're talking about taste and quality, and, you know, number one, public safety, yes, you know, and I think whether we soften it or don't soften it, no question that, you know, public safety, we're taking care of that portion of it. But really, without, you know, having, you know, a panel of people to actually, you know, maybe sample the water, or know what's, what we're taking out of it, you know, is it enough of a difference to justify the cost? What is the cost of softening that water? Could we use that revenue that we save from that to help build our system? I mean, those, those are questions the council needs to deal with. I don't think we can do it tonight. I know we can't do it tonight.
Certainly not.
But really, what, what, what quality, I would expect the best quality water we can, without a doubt, and I think that's a privilege we can give to the residents of Forest Lake is to give them the best quality water that we can. But are we talking about a one percent differen, I mean, are we talking a noticeable difference or not? I mean, it's not gonna be like the billboard where when they wash their hair, it turns orange, I mean, we're not dealing with something like that, we're not dealing with, you know, water that has odors to it. I mean, what are we getting for the money we're spending on that? That's part of the, what we need to question, you know, and I don't know that, I don't think anybody can answer that.
And one of the other things we're looking at, the big thing on our capital improvement plan for the water system is mostly your distribu, distribution and your supply. So regardless of how we're treating that water, we still need to produce that much water because we're already running a thin line when it comes to summertime. So, I mean, there's hairs to be split, but I think the majority of the meat and potatoes is there and laid out.
Well, after, you know, we should look at where our supply was beyond the fact that when Lighthouse Labs was under construction, we had to shut a well down and some water mains down, which really hampered our supply at that point. Have we run into scenarios other times that we're running short? I know this, this year itself was pretty wet, so I don't think there was a lot, but, you know, we can regulate some of that with, you know, how people sprinkle, you know, mandating water sensors. We just did two big projects at the high school on the junior high for water reuse, that's gonna bring in, or take offline several million gallons of water out of our system anyway, so.
To your caveat, the best way to discourage those green lawns is to raise the price.
Yeah, yeah, but, you know...
That green lawn starts costing a lot of money, you're gonna rethink your priorities, and the one, the one thing I have with the enterprise fund is we're selling a product and a service here. It's true, they don't have a second option other than buying Culligan bottled water if they want to have a service like that.
Or a softener.
It gets, it gets expensive watering your lawn that way, but, you know, we, we have an obligation, there's no other outsourcing the water. This is literally the live stream of the city here, and I see enough evidence, the need for what we have put in front of us for the infrastructure to take care of. And again, you can take a look at the six percent missed out, your three percent inflation, whatever interest was missed in that long term, and that eighteen percent, yeah, kinda sucks up front to look at that big number, but I think it's kind of in line with where we need to be. I don't think it's far-fetched when you factor that. I do like the idea of revisiting this again sooner than later, I do like how it drops down to a three percent tiered, was that after five years, we go down to three percent?
Yes.
And when you take a look at doing projects, there's no time cheaper than do it now. Building materials don't get cheaper down the road. The cost of labor doesn't get cheaper down the road. It needs to be a business model, we don't wanna be spending that money we don't have, so we either better get that money in-house or not spend it.
So how much a year are we spending for, is it one and a half million approximately? Our revenue that we get in?
What page are we on here?
Are you talking total revenue?
On eighty-four, I think, total revenue.
For two thousand nineteen, it would be close to two million for the water revenue, and that would be doing the eighteen percent increase.
Now, it looks like we still have debt service on the water system?
That is correct.
What was that for?
Water plant.
Plant, four, three, okay. Is that just about paid off then?
I would have to go back and look here, but we also have in nineteen, an estimated three point five million of debt issuance as well.
Okay, 'cause I'm looking at the debt service line, and it just doesn't seem to change that much with the new...
I think it was two years, I think it was two more years it dropped off, but with the new debt service, that's why you don't see a change. We try to keep the debt services level as possible, so, again, keep the impact and the rates where minimal is possible.
I mean, if you, if you look at this screen that's up there, the rate increases, if you're, you're just assuming that you're gonna have a three percent increase inflationary across the board, and you miss the six percent, so you're act, I mean, your overall increase minus, you know, the inflation is what, a nine percent, a seven, two fours?
So, I mean, they, I agree with Councilman Backus at that eighteen, I mean, that's a heck of a number to stare at, but, you know, missing a six percent and pulling in inflation, I mean, it's a nine percent, and to get a lot of work done with a nine, a seven, and two fours, and continue on with your three percent, I mean, you're getting sixteen million dollars worth of work done, that's, and getting our cash reserves back up so we can get to that point where we can make a decision to shoot a line down somewhere to spur development, or to run down a cul-de-sac and hook up four people that are interested in hooking up, you know, because right now, we can't even afford to do that as well, so we're kinda stuck. And it's, maybe that's not the emergency that our plants are so bad, but we gotta, there's a lot of stuff everybody wants to do, but we have to make sure we can deliver the water first, and then we can talk about where we wanna service the people, you know?
Any idea how much water we're losing because of faulty meters?
A decent amount, you know, as they get up to fifteen-plus years, your accuracy's getting close to about ninety percent, so you're losing ten percent of your water.
So maybe across the board, we're losing at least five percent of our total revenue?
Yeah, and, and, you know, that, as this can get revisited, you know, when you get your new meters, and you might see a decent spike in revenue just because there's approximately three thousand meters that, you know, out of the eight thousand that we have, three thousand need to get swapped, so I mean, you might gain a decent amount of revenue, you may be able to revisit this and say those two sevens can drop down to the threes, you're gaining your revenue back, you know, it's just...
Yeah, that's what I meant by this, this is not a cut in stone. These are great recommendations for sure, and, I don't know, this stuff doesn't get cheaper, that's it, that's all there is to it.
Also, the numbers we have sooner rather than later are more predictable, right? And so there's nothing that prevents future council from reevaluating as those numbers start to materialize and as actual project expenses come in. I, but I do think my concern on setting a lower rate this year is that that just prolongs the time and the longer the conversation we have to have of playing catch-up. I would rather send a signal of we are playing catch-up and bite the big number, rather, and have some certainty built into our projections rather than to take on more risk and continue to kick it down the road.
We could throw that six percent out there now, but it's gonna make next year twenty-four percent when you get your natural picture, it just seems irresponsible.
Go ahead, Ed.
My concern is the other way around, it seems that when it comes to fees and rates, once you set them, they never go back down, they don't go the other way, no matter who the council is.
You're not gonna necessarily drop in your rates, but you're just not gonna be raising them?
You don't know that.
I don't know what the next council's gonna do, or the one after that, or the one after that, but you can hope that if they realize that the enterprise fund's healthy and good, there's no reason to keep raising rates. As long as Mr. Cheeto's here, I think we're gonna be good.
Well, there's so many, there's so many questions, I, you know, I mean, I know we have to raise rates, I mean, nine percent to me is by far the highest I could support for this change to go into next year, but, you know, you look at the other parts of it, you know, two dollars a quarter for a meter fee, I mean, that should be at least five dollars a quarter. You know, you look at how we're billing water, and I don't understand why we have different rates for one type of meter than another when you get to the bigger meters. You know, if somebody's using fifteen thousand gallons, it shouldn't matter to me what type of meter they have, why we're billing them like that, and, you know, I think we need to, you know, the, long-term, you know, why is a four-inch ball meter at, you know, three thirty, and a four-inch spring meter at, you know, three sixty-seven or four seventy-nine?
If you wanna look at the meter fee, the two dollars a quarter, I believe, kind of wants to pay for itself at the end of the lifetime, but I believe that's the target goal of that.
That is correct.
Figure your lifespan's on a ten, twelve, fifteen years?
Fifteen, I believe.
Fifteen.
Fifteen years, so, I mean, you're taking in a hundred and twenty bucks after fifteen years on that, that's about the price of your meter, so...
Doesn't cover labor at all, then?
Certainly doesn't.
In fifteen years from now, it's gonna be a lot more expensive to have that meter than it is now, if they last that long. I'm just, you know, these are all little points of it that, you know, we should have had this at a workshop to go through, I guess, but I think the critical thing right now is, you know, rate, I mean, that's, that's what they're looking for. Ed?
Well, the only, I mean, rates are, this thing's planned out for the next ten years, but I mean, every council every year is gonna look at the rates, so...
Of course.
I think what we should be concentrating on is what rate do we need to take us through next year?
I agree.
And what projects are they gonna do next year, and we need that kinda money. I don't care twenty years up, sorry, 'cause I don't know what's gonna happen twenty years up.
Agreed. So, can we put the CIP plan back up, the projects by year? Part of the enthusiastic nodding as you say those things, Councilmember Egner, and my part is that the plan is front-loaded, front-loading those projects, and if we really are front-loading those projects, we need to be pretty aggressive this year in rate because otherwise...
Well, the front-loading does two things, obviously, it takes care of the projects, but it keeps your cash up throughout the life of the rate increases, is really what you're looking to do, is just spike the cash at the beginning and then kinda level it off. I mean, you wanna keep your, your reserves to a place where that you feel comfortable with, and part of the early spiking is to, to, you know, it's like capitalizing interest when you do a bond, you know, you just kinda sail along those first two years to protect what you're doing.
So what type of time span to rehab plant one and three? I mean, that's gonna be more than a year anyway, right?
Yep, plants and specs, if it was approved, probably be done by July, work in August, probably through the end of the year into the following, probably year of work.
So it just to do plans and specs, it's gonna be to July?
Yeah.
You're gonna wanna take the plant offline in the wintertime, not in the summer, so you're gonna probably have six months of waiting?
And just recall, this is also optimized by when we're going to sell the bonds and how we're gonna sell the bonds, so changing the rates beyond what you have here, we'll have to go back in elders and try to figure out how those bonds get sold, and what's the most advantageous to the city to structure those and when, and that's what, that also is involved with that. When we had elders in the room, combined with AEM, we made sure we covered those things and to, to take advantage of the rates, but also how we're gonna sell the bonds and when we're gonna sell the bonds, so it's all level and advantageous. Level and advantageous to what we have to do, so.
I thought we weren't using elders anymore for bonding. And we switched to a different company for that?
We've always used elders. There was a different bond council that we went away from.
A bond council, okay.
Elers has always been our bonding.
That's right, never mind, yeah, sorry about that.
You know.
It it's just too much for me, you know, I I I'm stuck at nine percent, and I don't like to say that, but.
The one thing about it being a user point. I mean, this isn't their taxes, this is a product they're buying. They have a choice on how much they're using, so at least, uh, there's always an option on that one.
Now, you know, I. I think whatever the council sets, I think then, you know, the city can work back through that. But eighteen percent is just not palatable to me, I I mean, nine percent is is more than I'd like to see. Uh, I think I can support that, given that we already had a six percent.
Miss.
You know, looking at that anyway, so I I mean.
It's essentially just inflation, though, I mean, that's not.
Oh, three percent's inflation.
Well, but six percent missed from last year plus a three percent inflationary rate this year. I think nine is too low.
Lowest I would go on that is twelve, that's a six and a six, I mean, and then you throw your three percent in there. Yeah, we're we're right back to here. I think it's splitting hairs, it's it's not a nice number, but.
But is there really a three percent inflation? I mean, what CPI was an up, last year it was down, wasn't it?
Take out like two point seven, if I recall, I have to go back.
We're at two point six, I think was the last one I saw.
Okay, but last year, we were actually, wasn't it a negative number?
Was it negative?
No, I don't think it was here before.
No, it wasn't negative, was it?
Okay. Well, um, without any further discussion, you had something, Sam?
Well, if nothing else, look at this thing year by year by year. You know, we did, I think we need to front. We need to find out what that eighteen percent's gonna do. I really do, I, and I know it's painful and all, that's a forty-dollar impact for the year. And then next year, revisit it.
What did our trash rates just go up?
I can't remember what that percentage was. But that'll be going up again with the inflation as well, the tipping fees, so. Matt Council raised our sewer rates fifteen percent, I mean.
This is, this is the.
It's it's forty dollars here, a hundred dollars there.
That's right.
Fifty dollars here, I mean, it all adds up, I mean, I'm just trying to do this as as fair as we can to the consumers that we're serving. They don't have a choice, you know, they don't have a choice where to go. So I just don't want to see a huge impact all at once, I think we can explore. You know, a lot of options on how we're delivering that, you know, how we're treating that water, those are questions that haven't been answered yet. I would go nine percent.
Can Steph maybe answer a question? It's my second, second budget go-around, but I was under the impression that this was a rate that we set every single year, is that correct? Am I missing something?
Yeah, you can, you don't have.
We adjust, we evaluate every year.
Well, you can, I mean, obviously, you probably could set rates five years if you want to, but.
But that has, we've typically done an annual approval, correct?
I think you've only done an annual rate, yes.
Now, we're not gonna do a full water rate study every year, we would probably would do another one in another, maybe three to five years, correct? I just, um.
Yeah, I mean, I agree that this scenario was laid out, but it doesn't mean that you have to get married to the, to obtain your plan.
But I think what I'm married to is that we are underwater right now, like our, no pun intended.
Yeah, the water, the water fund needs help, it needs help for its cash flow, it needs help for its projects. And, you know, I I I think, yeah, you you should look really closely at the water rates every year. And it's an expanded part of your budget process to say, you know, what what did that eighteen or ten or whatever rate you set? What'd that do to your cash flow, you should be, that should be obviously pretty quick, I mean, we should have been able to tell sometime during this year that that six percent was missing. And I don't know, you know, I won't comment on that, but just by expected cash that came in, we should have noticed that six percent wasn't there. So, you know, I think an annual review is is essential, so that you plan, you know, so you don't have this discussion in the future where you have to jump rates eighteen percent. If you did it every year and you did it truly, you wouldn't have these kind of impacts. You need to raise it to meet whatever your expectations are for your capital plan and for inflation and for operation costs, so. You know, your goal would be to go maybe to, it it's much better to have a two to three percent or up to six percent every year than an eighteen, a ten, a seven, and a seven, so. Unfortunately, it hasn't happened.
Correct.
And and for whatever reason, that hasn't happened, but you need to, now you're in a place where something's gotta happen to change the course of that. To get us to a place where we can try to get back to that three percent or that four percent or that whatever percentage is at here on an annual basis.
So, give it a name. Go ahead. I like to draw attention the fact with Ms. Lynch went over our budget, we had fifty-eight percent of our our spending is on public safety and fifteen percent's on public works. Out of that, um, fifteen percent, you know, the water is not taken from your taxes, that's simply something we're selling.
Right.
So you take a look at what we're spending, it's, the water is is what keeps life sustained in Forest Lake. We're not gonna need police and fire.
Only for those that have water.
We're not gonna need police and fire if we're not making water for people who live in their houses. You know, you take a look at how much money we collect, how much we're spending for those services that people don't use on a daily basis. But when you look at this, I mean, you turn that water tap on, flush the toilet, wash your laundry, take a shower, you're doing that multiple times a day. Uh, I'm not saying we need to get greedy by any standard, there's nothing that we're we're doing, we're not building the Taj Mahal, we're not getting. More employees than we need, and this is simply taking care of the infrastructure we have, building for the expansion that we we need. Right now, we're not in a comfortable position. It is, you know, this summer, we had a very uncomfortable situation, we were nervous if we were gonna pump and distribute enough water for the demand we had that day, or for those two days. That's not a situation we need to be in, one of those things we need to get out of that.
Yeah. That was, that was due to construction accident, it was not due to our inability or or public works not taking care of what they need to do. I think they do a good job.
It wasn't a capacity issue.
It wasn't a capacity issue, I mean, you know, if tomorrow a water main blows out on Broadway and we lose all the water in the towers. You know, we're gonna be down for a couple of days, you know, if we get a virus the way Blaine did or ransomware, you know, it, there's things beyond anybody's control. And we could raise rates five hundred percent and still not cover every scenario that we have, I mean, that just isn't it. I'm I'm not talking that, I'm just talking, trying to be fair. We're selling a product, we're running a business, we're selling a product. You know, if you order in a Walmart and, you know, the next day they got, you know, they doubled or jacked their price up twenty percent on something. You know, you can, you can walk away and not buy it, this is not something you have a choice on, I'm just trying to soften that impact. While we have, or the council has time to analyze what other options we have.
We're fortunate.
Softening is an expensive proposition, are we getting enough value for it to soften it? I don't know that, I can't, can you, I I don't think anybody can answer that till we find out what, how much, you know, what is in the water to begin with.
We can ask it, what's your raw water hardness?
Our raw water, about neutral, about seven.
How many grains of hardness?
We're down to three and a half to five is what we soften it to.
Do you know what what the grains of hardness is coming in?
I don't know, offhand it varies, but it's, I mean, we're softening it down quite a decent amount. But there's a lot of other communities that don't soften at all.
Are you, I mean, are you like seven grains hardness and then you're taking it down to three?
Yeah, we're taking it down quite a ways.
Because I know it, our water plant is in Brooklyn Park, which is, by the way, has terrible water. It has thirty grains of hardness, TDS, which is the government recommends no higher than five hundred. They're typically at seven fifty and nine hundred during the summer. They don't have any filtration, they don't have anything that can do anything about it, so it's, all they gotta do is say there's nothing we can do about it, that's the way it is. And consequently, everybody in Brooklyn Park has water softeners, which is good for our business, but. But it's a huge community and they're thriving just fine without softening their water. I think that's a discussion that can come up later, but I think what we need to do now is, because we certainly can't solve that problem in in the next couple of meetings even, before the end of the year.
What year will we be building a new plant? I'm sorry, where do you?
Yeah, I'm just saying that, uh, we need to deal with, do something about raising the rates and getting it at a proper amount, so, and, uh. You know, these folks have worked hard on this study and they've worked for us before in the previous years, working on these studies and and. They've been pretty darn accurate with their their numbers and, uh. If you have a problem with the whole ten-year thing, then let's move ahead and get something going for two thousand and nineteen and revisit it again, year by year.
You look at the, uh, the big ticket item next year is, we're having one and three, and you said splitting them, right? You know, we're we're not.
Well, it's the same plant, we can't split it.
Well, if you can be able to run them independently. But we're not building a new treatment plant until twenty twenty, so at least we could do is take a look at what's going on this year, come twenty twenty, we'll, you can have that discussion. I mean, we'd be kicking everything down the road if we wanted to to go away from softening and there's a lot, a lot of discussion to.
But going back to Patrick's discussion, this has a bearing, the cash reserve has a bearing on your bonding, is that correct?
Absolutely.
So, I mean, that's something to consider.
Correct.
Because when you do the plant, you're gonna wanna bond, I mean, you're, there's gonna be a big cash out there.
And you're gonna want a well-funded balance.
So you wanna have a, exactly.
So it's more than just what kind of projects are we doing next year?
Well, so then that was part of the analysis, correct, was getting the right cash at the right time to support the best bond, given the timing of the projects.
And keeping the reserves where they should be, yes.
Yep.
Right, which impacts bondability.
Absolutely.
Right.
Correct. I'd like to make a suggestion, thing is, we already tabled the other one to put off to find, kind of find out where we really are gonna end up the end of the year, cash-wise. That. We look, wait, at least wait till then to see where we're gonna be and maybe divert some of that money to this.
I made that recommendation earlier, I I'm totally fine going that route.
I don't know statutorily if we can divert general fund to water fund.
Well, we'd be paying back that loan, correct?
We could pay back the loan that they owe, that definitely can do, but I just don't know, because, you know, water fund is is an enterprise fund by its users. Whereas that other revenue is from taxpayers in general. Mark?
My mind is getting foggy, um, the ti, what what is the, is the is the fund that is the loaning fund for the interfund loaned? Is that a general, I mean, is that able to be funded through, um, general fund?
Well, right now, the loan is from the water and the sewer fund, if I recall correctly.
I'm sorry, but if we were to repay that, but that's.
Well, you know, the one of the, I don't know if, you know, one of the methods is to have the general fund pay back the water fund and then have the loan go to the general fund, since you have a good cash balance in the general fund. That way, your water and sewer is made whole, and your general fund takes the hit. Now, that may affect what you want to do with the tax levy this time, because you're you're reallocating funds, but that's something we obviously can look at.
I think it'd be worth looking.
I think we'll get a lot more information to the next meeting. Table this item as well.
I'm okay looking, I'm okay looking at it, at least where your balances are projected to be and what the options are for repaying that fund. I still think we've got a tough number ahead of us, but I'm open to at least looking at what that looks like.
Can we give one more number for next week, too? I mean, if if we raise, say, nine percent, ten percent. What revenue that, I mean, to me, that's gonna bring in like a hundred and fifty thousand dollars or two hundred thousand dollars. But we're looking at spending two million next year just on that retrofit, I mean, wherever we're at raising those rates, it's it's gonna be a long-term payback. But are we bond, are we looking at bonding everything at one time and then?
No, we're not looking at bonding for everything at one time, even with the building of the new water treatment plant, it's bonding over a two-year period.
So how many different bond sales would we have?
Probably at least two, because the first year, you'd probably have three million, because you have the treatment plant, one and three, and you have the meters and whatever else, so you've got. About three point six million dollars in capital needs. But then the next two years, the twenty, and twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one are the the critical years, because those are the most expensive. And we did split the the water treatment plant in half between those two years for a possibility of giving ourselves a little room to bond differently there, as far as as that goes. Maybe a four million dollar bond in one year and a five million dollar in the next, or doing it all at once and investing some of those, whatever the funds are, so we get interest in. Until we need to spend the money, so it, I don't recall the scenario elders gave us exactly, but there's different ways to structure that bond to make it work correctly.
Thank you. Any, have they given any thoughts on, you know, long-term rates for the bonds, I mean, it seems like a pretty stagnant market right now.
Well, the rates are, I believe, are still in the threes, if I recall, in the threes. We looked at, um, you know, traditionally, I would have asked for a ten-year bond, but that's too short, that would have, that rate would have killed you. Maybe I'll had heart attacks sitting up here with that kind of a rate. But, uh, we looked at a twenty-five-year bond, but that really didn't work out, that was a little bit too long for for what we wanted, so it's a twenty-year bond. Rates are pretty favorable, we'll have to wait and see in the spring where they go and that that'll also drive what we bond and how we bond it and and things like that. So it's kind of waiting and seeing what the, and then again, what the project's gonna come in, when the engineering's done, whether it's gonna be more, whether it's gonna be less. You know, obviously, these are really close numbers, but, you know, when you do this, you fine tune everything, so.
So when do we have to have a rate change before the fourth quarter billing?
I I think you need to do the rate change before the month's out, so we can prepare ourselves for the next bill.
So if we do it at next meeting, we're still okay then?
We'll give it our best, let me put it that way, so. If you, I mean, if you delay it any further, it's just going to put you further behind, so you can't really wait.
Want to look for motion to table it or go with something tonight?
What kind of all information do you, would you like to see for tabling this, so we're clear on what's gonna be brought back next time?
Well, uh, you know, number one is, you know, where that interfund loan is at, how much that balance is. And just, you know, our general fund balances as well.
Yes, what I have is the status of the loans from.
Not just our general fund, but all our fund.
Yeah, I have, I have the status of the loan from the water sewer fund to the other funds, year-end projections for the other, not only the general fund, but all the operating, or the other operating funds.
All we're doing in the sewer fund, I mean, we're making money in there as well.
I have to look, I'm not sure. Those two things and then any possible differences in rates, which. Maybe difficult to come back with something different, but we'll take a look at it, depending on what we see.
I, I kinda look at it, but I'm running a business here. And, uh, I'm losing money, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna try to make that up, hoping three years from now, I'm gonna break even again. I'm gonna make sure I correct my prices right up front and continue on that profitable margin path. It's just a bad business model, in my opinion, to.
Well, you know, when you.
To eat the difference.
When you go to the mechanic and he says it's gonna be fifty thousand dollars, you might take your vehicle somewhere else to get a second opinion, if you go to the doctor and he says there's something wrong, you might wanna get a second opinion. That's what I'm asking for here, we gotta look at this again, because, you know, we're just presented with this and I think we've got other options. I just wanna.
I don't think so.
Have some time to look at those options, we've got a few days to look at it, but we're talking eighteen million dollars worth of of expenditures on a sheet of paper here. That we haven't had five minutes, you know, beyond tonight, we haven't had any discussion. We haven't been able to really dig in deep to what, you know, these plants are, what our treatment options are, what, you know, what type of staging we can do to just soften that impact. I mean, yeah, the numbers are probably gonna be where they're at, but is there a way we can, you know, ease that up? And maybe instead of, uh, um, you know, once your rate increase, maybe it's, you know, every six months, I mean, the billing goes out every quarter. But dealing with the meters and getting those meter fees set right and being diligent about, you know, watching those, changing them out, you know, all those types of factors. We've had a lot of discussions on this tonight and there's a lot of gray areas that aren't answered. Now, I I agree that, you know, the. WAC fee needs to be raised up at least to thirty-six hundred, if not more, but we don't know where our water area charges are at, how much we're going to be collecting from that. And that's not, I don't, water area charges aren't included in any of this capital improvement plan either, right?
Uh, no.
Okay. Lot of gray areas that are to be answered. I agree we needed rate increase, and, you know, if we did it tonight, I'd support nine percent. I just, you know, I'm I'm picking a number out of the air like half of these numbers are here. I know we need something, and I think that gets a good start to, you know, before the bills go out the end of this month, but beyond that, I think it is just a lot of discussion on, you know, how this gets staged to make it fair for everybody, and, you know, are we doing the best thing? Maybe it's time to spend a little bit more if we're going to get a lot longer life on equipment, you know, maybe instead of, you know, four million, eight million for a plant, maybe we're spending ten or eleven million, but getting it's going to last a lot longer, it's going to be a lot more efficient to operate. I don't know any of that tonight, and, oh, Dave, you do a great job over there, but, you know, those are questions we can't answer tonight either, so.
I appreciate, you know, trying to make a good hearty increase, you know, picking a number out of the air is something we didn't want to do. It's why we contacted AEM here to do that for us a little more strategically, so I.
Well, AEM looked at, you know, they were told by the city, here's how much we need to spend. I mean, they're not, they do the financials. They're not asking the questions. That's that's our job here.
So my my ask would be between Dave and Ryan, that we get some sort of presentation as to the projects that are going on and the implications of them. I'd like to see that, just so we have that more information when we're making this decision next week.
Projects on, currently on the CIP, just some additional detail.
Correct. Is there any other information the rest of the council could, you know, needs to request this time, so we can hopefully feel good about the decision we make next Monday.
How do we get Ryan in the loop? Oh, I'm sure he'll be in the loop. Yeah, is Ryan under, just out sick or?
No, his father passed away, so he's out this week.
Oh, all right. Oh, yeah, then let's give him time. We'll have to deal with it without that anyways, so.
Seth, Seth from Bolton, I thought I was here the other night. He's the one who put a lot of the numbers together, so I'll work with him. I mean, to get to that number, he broke everything down to dollars and cents, so we'll just, we'll get that, that to you.
Yeah, if you forward it to us, is, you know, the sooner the better anyway, rather than waiting to the council pack comes out anyway, just a little extra time to review it. All right.
Busy week next week. We'll make a motion to table it. Any motions out?
I'll second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
One opposed.
Oh, sorry, one opposed. All right, Ace Hargreaves invoices.
Make a motion, fam. I'll make a motion table.
All those in favor?
Aye.
One upstanding.
Staff updates.
I remembered my question. Are we a hundred percent on our inspections as far as you're doing the pre-trips?
We're not.
How is the, how is that sitting?
Our temporary labor that we had for seven days is now done, and we just have not had time in fire department, all the other things that are going on for year end, for me to get out the door to do that.
That's in the budget again for next year?
It was not in the budget for next year, but for one time expense.
There might be something we want to look at adding back in the budget, or isn't there just enough? Do you think we can do it without it?
Um, I, with my responsibility spread between three departments, it's tough to to get me to get out in order to do that, so that Andrew probably know. It is something that if we can look to fund that in the future, I estimated that it'd be under ten thousand to complete that project for next year.
I'd like to see that in the budget anyway, so it's completed. I think that's really valuable information that the responders can have anyways, so. Is that tied in at all with, like, well, like, North Memorial doesn't use it, right?
No, just, of course, I fire that along with P D in some instances, would use information and run runs together.
Sure.
But mostly the fire department for the project.
All right, well, yeah, I'd like to look at funding that for next year. I think we'll have the discussion with the budget, so. All right, thank you, Chief. Dan?
I have no updates. Unless you have questions for me.
Questions for you? Dave?
No updates, Dave.
All right, thank you. The guys did a good job with the plowing. I haven't heard one complaint on the city streets at all, so.
Pass along.
Well, everybody, thank you. Keith Peterson?
No updates for me, unless you have questions for me.
Questions for the chief? All right, thank you. Bailey?
I've started to gather information about commission appointments that are expiring at the end of two thousand and nineteen and have posted notice of the application on the city's website. It'll also be in the weekly email that we are accepting applications for appointments starting in two thousand and nineteen.
All right, thank you.
For various commissions.
All right, thank you. Can you check with me, too, the county, maybe, if they've filled the position on the Forest Lake Comfort Lake watershed board yet? I do have a applicant that's interested in that.
I think they may have a while ago, but I'll double check and let you know.
All right, thank you. Patrick?
I have no report.
Anne Bridget?
No, but, Your Honor.
All right, Anne takes us to council.
Back to me. I don't have any updates either. I didn't, no meetings since the last meeting, you know, other meetings that I went to, so.
No? Yeah.
No updates, other than, also would like to thank the public works, because I happen to be down south and coming back when we had the snowfall, and it was noticeably different when we hit Forest Lake, believe it or not, so kudos to you.
Then great job. Well, I'm going to keep the theme up here. No updates.
I've got no updates. I would like to extend our sympathies to Ryan and his family.
Definitely.
We, does the city do anything, like send flowers or anything like that?
I don't think they'd be, I think, I think we should.
We should.
Oh, definitely. I think we should leave that to Patrick's discretion.
Yes.
Agree.
But we should do something.
Just two quick updates. I missed the planning commission meeting due to a nasty commute back to Forest Lake, but nice to see things in good shape once I got here. And then also attended a rush line task force meeting. Twenty nineteen work plan was set as per previous year's impact to Forest Lake in twenty nineteen is minimal. However, it is on their work plan to maintain and to do everything they can to protect the St. Paul Express line that's currently running. And that is the main force like impact at this point, so that's it.
All right, thank you. And no other business. We'll promotion to adjourn. Second, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.